Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask Counselor Crick to start us off in a short prayer.
Lord, we thank you again for this beautiful day and the nice weather we're having. Pray your blessing on everyone that lives here in the MD of Bonneville and all the staff. Pray for safety for all the staffs that are out working today in the ditches and in the fields and wherever else they are working, and pray for us here at council that you give us wisdom today as we make decisions in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor Crick. Just looking if there's any additions to the agenda.
Morning, council. We do have a few additions to the agenda today. First, we have the addition of delegation of Bob's Portables. Also, we do have an addition under 3 point, or 9.3.5 of Bonneville Health Foundation funding request. Next, we have under council invitations, we have 9.5.3. That's Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center Open House. Also, under council invitations, 9.5.4, Lake Land Agricultural Research Association Summer Field Day Tour.
What number was that again?
The last one was 9.5.4.
And that was what again?
That was Lara.
Lara?
Yeah, Summer Field Tour.
And the 9.3.5, what was that again, Bonneville?
That's Bonneville Health Foundation Funding Request.
Okay, I can't read fast enough.
Sorry.
Any more?
That's it.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Crick. Make some motion to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, oh, sorry, here we go again. Sorry there, Jolene. I need the adoption of the minutes, regular meeting of council, June 22, 2022.
I'll make the motion to adopt the minutes.
Thank you Deputy Reed Fideev for making that motion to adopt the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. I think since the delegation is here, we're gonna move right into the delegation, so come on up. Just press your button, I don't know if your mic's on or not. There it is, that's good.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Right on. My name is Robert Raymond Hodgins. I'm the current owner and will be the only owner of Bob's Portables. Sixteen and a half years of business in this area, and most of yous guys know me, everybody's know me. As a current, uh, our current business owner in this area, I have a good working relationship with the MD and the people around the MD as well. So, as of June 22, 2022, yous guys have made a motion to close all of the lagoons as of July 31, 2022 as well. I, I like to say that's fine, but even if they are closed, they're, they're in peril right now, and lots of people don't see what the problems are. I do. I've been working with the MD for like seventeen years, and these, these hamlet lagoons are getting into peril. What we do need to do is fix them, and I know there's not much budget to keep them fixed, but I propose to get something that, say Ardmore, for example, needs to be fixed really badly. What's happening is the sewage is not breaking down to where it's, these ponds are filling up and they're, it's, it's, when they try to pump them out, the influent's not broke down enough to, to pump them out, so what's happening is there's too much influent in there, and we all know, there's been studies and stuff saying that aeration works well. It works great, and if you go up to Coal Lakes Lagoons, City of Coal Lakes, and they got pumps working all the time on, on two of their cells, and they have no problems of solids, sand, or anything. It's, it's eaten it all up and it's healthy, the birds are flying around it, and it's great, right? There's no aeration. There's none. There was some, and it, it didn't work because they were from Texas. The pipes were plastic. Wintertime, you try to kick it in, they freeze, or something goes down, it freezes and cracks the plastic. They're not designed for our climate, but there is a, a solution. So, I propose for a budget, say, of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to get a good, uh, air compressor, because it's basically pumping oxygen in there, and it eats up the sludge, right? The, the influent, and it puts it back to water. That's, that's just, it keeps the bacteria active, right? So, I propose like a fifteen to twenty thousand dollars would fix or, or help, because not only if we stop dumping in Ardmore, Ardmore's in, in bad shape, because it's, um, there is more houses being built in all these hamlets every year. There's more, more activity, we know, and, and not all, all that goes right through all to these hamlets, Fort Kent, Glendon, Thirion, that all goes to these hamlets. All these lagoons are, are bad shape. We need to fix them, and aeration helps a lot. So, proposing a fifteen or twenty thousand dollar budget for air compressor system to help out the problems, and then, and if it does help the problems, uh, I propose that we can start maybe dumping, alternate dumping, like for three or four months at a time at these lagoons, not all the time, say, three or four months at Ardmore, if it's healthy enough, and three or four months at Thirion, alternate the lagoons so that they don't get overloaded with the amount that's coming in, because there is a lot of people in the MD of Bonneville, as we, we know, right? MD of Bonneville's grown in the last twenty years substantially, right, from people coming in, and this being their home and industry and everything else, and, and then we can work from there. So, if we tend to get Ardmore healthy again, on track, and healthier, you know, when we do, if, if and when we do decide to dump in any of these lagoons again, I propose also twenty-five to fifty-dollar disposal fee to each and every resident that gets their tank done in the MD of Bonneville, including myself. So, then we have enough budget for our kitty to help clean these cells, maintain what we do need to maintain, the, you know, fix, there's always fixing on something, and also it'll help fix some of the problems at the water stations as well. I propose if me alone, uh, for an example, dump twenty loads at forty bucks a load, that's three, you know, three thousand dollars, I, just me alone, at the end of the year, you have thirty thousand dollars, and that's, I'm just one of six people that dumped there. And then we could have enough kitty, because it cost, what, fifty or sixty thousand the last time we cleaned the cell? That would have enough to clean it, and it wasn't cleaned properly the last time. The influent was cleaned out, but the sand and rocks and stuff that we get from the septic tanks were still, mean, left in there. The company that we got to clean it didn't clean it properly, because they didn't have the right means to clean it. So, the sand is still there, so we have to address problems that we have. These, and they're not gonna go away if we don't take care of them. So, that's what I propose, and like, until we get things, and if, if it doesn't work out with the aeration, um, we can permanently keep them closed, and we can dump at City of Coal Lake and Town of Bonneville. But even then, they're, they're in peril, and with all the influent coming from the hamlets, they're barely even keeping up right now. So, questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Do you know how many of those you dump per year yourself into the?
Uh, like I said, about twenty a week. I, I didn't work out the numbers. It varies from year to year, right? I, I vary probably twenty, I, on an average, twenty loads a week, and, you know, we worked it out, and it's about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars if it was, you know, and I'm, I'm only one guy. I run my own truck, right? And so, that's it. I, I just wanna see these things not going into very bad disrepair, and then all of a sudden, our children have to take over in the next ten or fifteen years, which I don't want them to have a mess or, or something that could have been fixed, right? By, you know, a few, few things, right? Yeah, um, if, if and when you do propose, if you do have any budget to think about getting a better aeration system for these lagoons, Fort Kent and Ardmore, I'd be willing, on my own time, to help yous guys put that up.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Sutcher.
I got one question. How many properties do you load up before you have to dump? Like, say, real?
Usually one, sometimes two. Yeah, maximum two. But I don't only do septic tanks, right? I do toilets for the MD and construction around. I do RVs for the MD and people around these MD places and their properties and stuff like that. I do RVs as well, right? It's not only that, right? So, it all adds up, but it's, those are on a smaller scale than, and having a proposal to propose to have a dumping fee for everybody is not a bad thing. If people can afford, say, a case of something or a case of pop, they can afford a, you know, forty bucks, right? So, um, that's what I propose if, if and when, uh, this is just going off of what I, I learned, I, there's no studies being done or anything like that, so I, I, I propose that, you know, fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, maybe twenty thousand, after, we don't use twenty thousand dollars, you know?
Okay, well, we'll discuss it in council here, for sure. Any other questions?
Sure.
Well, thank you for your presentation, sir.
Yeah.
It was very well done.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, you have a great evening, or a good, great morning. Looking for a motion, council?
Just to, to accept it as information, and then, okay, yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept Bob's presentation as information.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick. You're making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts a presentation by Bob Portable Limited as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, man, sorry, guys. Call for the vote. Carrie? I guess we'll go on to six, 6.1 Development Application, D 122, Major Home Business. Good morning.
This is Development Permit 2022-D-122 for Robert Gamash. The applicant is applying for a major home business use to operate a trucking business. The property is located 2,000 feet south of Township Road 622 and Range Road 452 intersection, approximately three miles northwest of the hamlet of Fort Kent. Adjacent properties are a residential parcel and quarter section remnants. The applicant is, is operating a trucking business out of an existing shop that was constructed on development permit to 2014-D-256 and an office trailer. The applicant owns two trucks and operates with him and one other driver. The trucks are dispatched from the shop to pick up, pick up and deliver loads. No loads are brought back to the site, but trucks are dispatched whenever they are required. Referrals were sent to the MD's Public Safety and Infrastructure Service Departments, and they replied with no concerns. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on June 26, 2022, and we received no response. Our recommendation for Development Application 2022-D-122 is approve the request for a major home business use for a trucking business in an existing shop and office trailer within Northeast 10625 west of the Fourth Meridian as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Robert Gamash with the following conditions. As per Section 52 of the Land Use Bylaw 1667, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety. Shall comply with Noise Control Bylaw Number 1657. Shall control, comply with Nuisance Bylaw 981. As per Section 47.3, Major Home Business, a major home business may utilize an accessory building while still maintaining the residential use as the primary use on the site. The home business may employ up to three people who do not live on the site or within the primary residence. The home business may not generate traffic uncharacteristic to the area. All required parking must be on-site. Outdoor storage of material, goods, or equipment on the site shall be directly related to the home business, and at the discretion of the Development Authority, may require screening or fencing. The home business shall not, in the develop, opinion of the Development Officer, be a source of inconvenience, materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties by way of excessive noise, smoke, steam, odor, dust, vibration, or refuse matter, which would not commonly be found in the neighborhood. If at any time, any of the conditions of the home business have not, in the opinion of the Development Authority, been complied with, the Development Authority may issue a stop order pursuant to provisions of the Municipal Government Act. Shall enter into a heavy haul agreement with Infrastructure Services, and a develop, a building permit is required for the office skid shack.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Yes, Deputy Reed Fideev?
Just have a question. So, this is the first time they're applying for this permit?
Correct.
So, the reason they're applying for it is, was it complaint, or was there?
Yes, well, not a complaint. Assessment went out, and they found the skid shack was on-site, and through contact with the landowner, it was discovered that he was operating a business out of there and using the skid shack as his, as his office, and we have received his application as a result.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept option one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sutcher, making a motion on behalf of council that council approves Development Permit Application Number 2022-D122, a major home business for a trucking business out of a existing shop and office trailer located at Northeast 10625 west of the Fourth as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Robert Gamash as per recommendation presented. Any discussion on this motion? I'll call for the vote. On to 6.2.
This is Development Application 2022-D1-127 for Janice Bab. The applicant is applying for a major home business use to operate an antique shop. The property is located northwest of Township Road 625 and Range Road 442 intersection, approximately 4.5 miles north of the hamlet of Ardmore. Adjacent properties are quarter sections and remnants. The applicant is operating an antique store out of an existing farm building. They offer knickknack, they offer antiques for sale through their, onsite, and through a Facebook group. They offer antique furniture, knickknacks, housewares, kitchenware, sports, toys, and farm pieces. They operate 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM and have one employee. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out June 22, 2022, and we have received no response. Recommendation for Application 2022-D-127 is approve the request for a major home business use for an antique store located at Southeast 34624 west of the Fourth Meridian as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Janice Bab on behalf of Janice and Douglas Bab with the following conditions. A building permit is required for the antique store, shall comply with Noise Control Bylaw 1657, shall comply with Nuisance Bylaw 981, as per Section 47.3, Major Home Business. A major home business may utilize accessory buildings while still maintaining the residential use as the primary use on-site. The home business may employ up to three persons who do not live on-site or within the primary residence. The home business may not generate traffic uncharacteristic to the area. All required parking must be on-site. Outdoor storage of materials, goods, equipment on the site shall be directly related to the business, and at the discretion of the Development Authority, may require screening or fencing. The home business shall not, in the opinion of the Development Officer, Authority, be a source of inconvenience, materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties by way of excessive noise, smoke, steam, odor, dust, vibration, or refuse matter that would not commonly be found on, in the neighborhood. If at any time, any of the conditions for the home business have not, in the opinion of the Development Authority, been complied with, the Development Authority may issue a stop order pursuant to the provisions of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Take a breath. Yes, Deputy Reed Fideev?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion, one, to approve. Option one.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reed Fideev for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves Development Permit Application Number 2022-D127, a major home business use for an antique store located at Southeast 34624 and west of the Fourth as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Janice Bab on behalf of Janice and Douglas Bab as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going on to seven, 7.1 Subdivision Application. Morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Subdivision Application 2022-S-007 is located Northeast 13627 west of the Fourth Meridian. Administration has received and is presenting Application 2022-S-007 to council for consideration where the applicant is proposing to subdivide one five-acre parcel from a previously subdivided agricultural quarter section as shown on the map attached as Appendix A. Notification of proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with the deadline of June 22 to submit concerns to be considered at the July 13 council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. Subject site is located on Range Road 470 and Township Road 622 north of Forsyth Lake. The applicant's are John Simone LaFrance. The application meets all conditions of the Municipal Government Act, subdivision and development regulations, lower Athabasca Regional Plan, municipal development plan, land use bylaw, and therefore we recommend it be approved as per conditions. Legal and physical access to proposed parcels and remnant, cash and loot of municipal reserve, dedicated by caveat a seventeen-foot strip of land on the east side of the proposed end remnant. Subdivisions cannot intersect the pipeline or power line right-of-way, and taxes to be paid in full.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this option one.
Thank you, Counselor Sutcher, on making a motion on behalf of council that council approves subdivision application number 2022-S007 to subdivide one five-acre parcel from previous subdivided agricultural quarter section in Northeast 13627 west of the Fourth for John and Simone LaFrance as per conditions presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
No, no business arising from the minutes, so we'll go to nine, new business, so I guess 9.2.1.
Council, before we start with this one, we will need a notice of motion to open up the Riverhurst bin site discussion. So, I believe we do have a motion set up. Previously, we were thinking that we would have to suspend the rules, but looking through our, or through our bylaws, not, we don't, but we do have a motion set up for, to bring the Riverhurst bin site back.
Okay, okay, so we need this motion before we proceed?
Yes, we do.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll move this one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council waives the requirements for notice of motion to reconsider the, and furthermore that Resolution Number 22.156 from the March 23, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council be reconsidered due to the objection received by residents regarding the temporary new location of the Riverhurst bin site in accordance with procedural bylaw number 1787. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Okay, you can proceed.
Good morning, council. I'm here to present an RFD for the Riverhurst bin site. So, the background on this one, the Riverhurst bin site was located behind the Riverhurst Hall for over ten years as a temporary bin site. As the usage of the bin site increased, the demand for more bins exceeded the space available, and an alternative location was proposed for the property at the southwest quarter of Section 15 and Township 63, Range 3, west of the Fourth Meridian, which is owned by the Municipal District of Bonneville. On March 23, 2022- Bonneville. On March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, council approved a motion directing administration to relocate the Riverhurst bin site to Hilldale Lake landfill for a one-year term as a pilot project. The situation remains a concern as administration has been fielding calls from unhappy residents of the area who now have to store their waste until they can access the Hilldale Lake landfill during regular hours of operation. As such, we are looking for council's direction on how to proceed. So the options here, uh, the MD owns a hundred-and-sixty-one acre parcel of land on Range Road four-thirty-three that is ideally located one mile west and three-quarters of a mile south of the former bin site at the Riverhurst Hall. Relocating to this site would incur minimal costs as the site would be situated in a cleared area requiring little construction. The quarter section of land directly northwest of the MD-owned parcel contains thirty-two residences and through public consultation during the initial planning stages in twenty-twenty-two, sorry, in twenty-twenty, approximately twenty-five residents signed a petition against proceeding with this re- relocation. This lack of support for the proposed site still exists as calls were made in opposition of the development permit in March of this year. The Hilldale Lake landfill has been discussed as another option to construct a public drop-off facility. However, it is located seven miles from the Riverhurst Hall. Administration has not identified any other sites as suitable and the site at the Riverhurst Hall cannot be upgraded or built upon as there simply is no space on the property even if all parties were agreeable to an upgrade or partnership. Hilldale Lake landfill, which Riverhurst area residents are directed to use for their waste drop-off, is currently open Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Sundays from ten AM to six PM. Attached for council information is an overhead of the proposed location. In reference to the strategic plan, goal one, building a prosperous and sustainable community, and goal two, sustainable infrastructure that meets the needs of the community. In reference to provincial and federal legislation, because this is a pro- public drop-off facility, no provincial or federal regulations apply. For source of funding, administration has a hundred thousand dollars carried over from the twenty-twenty budget for the relocation of this bin site. The administration recommended action is that council directs administration to relocate the Riverhurst bin site to the property at the southwest quarter of section fifteen and Township sixty-three, range three, west of the fourth meridian as proposed. The council options are that council directs administration to relocate the Riverhurst bin site to the property at the southwest quarter of section fifteen and Township sixty-three, range three, west of the fourth meridian as proposed. Option two, the council directs administration to continue exploring options for purchasing suitable land for a new bin site and bring it back to council during twenty-twenty-three budget deliberations. Option three, the council directs administration to construct a bin site at the Hilldale Lake landfill. And option four, the council directs administration to continue the one-year pilot of having residents use the Hilldale Lake landfill for their waste disposal.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion?
I just had a question, though. With that quarter section that the MD owns, is there, is there future plans for that at all? For, because we're not going to use the whole quarter, obviously, for the bin site. Uh, through the reef, uh, there currently are no plans for the rest of the quarter.
Yes, Counselor Skarson?
Yeah, I was in favor of the, uh, this bin site before. I am still. Um, it's about the same distance from what I live from a bin site and I, there's no issues with the one that I'm next to, so I'll go ahead and make the motion for option number one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to relocate the Riverhurst bin site to property owned by the MD of Bonneville located at southwest fifteen sixty-three, three west of the fourth as presented. Any discussion on this, yes, Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Reeve Fadeev?
Mr. Owen, in regards to your bin site, your map number under A, was that the same, uh, site as or square box as you had before? Was that closer to the road?
Uh, through the reef, Counselor Fadeev, we, we, um, proposed that location, uh, initially was a hundred meters off the property line.
Yep.
This proposed location is three hundred meters, uh, away from the adjacent or, uh, from the property across the road, across Range Road four-thirty-three.
So the, so the access road going to the new location, uh, since there's been gravel hauling out of there for years, there should be enough compact there that there's not going to be any issues with future development of that road?
Uh, through the reef, there, there has been, um, lots of compaction on that road. It wouldn't need to be widened a little bit and a little bit of brushing done to wa- uh, to open it up, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Uh, so how far will the hundred thousand dollars get you? Just as far as maybe the planning end of it? Because it's not going to get you everything that is required or the standards we have, uh, set across all, uh, across all of the MD, right?
Right. So we wouldn't be paving this site initially. Um, we would be putting bins there, uh, that we already have in stock, um, that we moved from, from the other location along with a few recycling bins. And, uh, we would be doing a little bit of brushwork and then, um, going from there.
Okay, thanks.
So the first per- so the first site was right along the road or right along our court, uh, right here? Right?
To the reef, yeah. So it was, it was a hundred meters, uh, off the property line and this, this proposed site now is three hundred meters from the property across the road.
Right, right.
From the nearest property.
Why did we move it in? Why did we move it in so far?
In reference to, uh, provincial legislation, transfer sites need to, need a three-hundred-meter setback from property. Um, this being a public drop-off, drop-off facility does not require that, but we figured, um, that we should be able to, you know, help appease the, the residents across the road by, by.
Okay.
Doing this.
Thank you. Any other, uh, yes, Counselor Sutrick?
So this bin site, I just want to, for my information, it's going to be fenced in and it's going to be closed in, like say, the North Shore Heisman?
So through the reef, Counselor Slipjock. Um, this bin site initially would just be bins placed and we would, um, you know, uh, assess how things go for the first year, um, how the wind affects the bins, you know, um, anything with the snow in the wintertime blowing in, how we might want to situate the bins in this proposed location. And then, uh, we could look, look at addressing fencing needs from there. We have, um, developed a bin site in the, in the Muriel Viewpoint subdivision in twenty-nineteen and then in twenty-twenty, we paved that. We did not fence that site in and we have not had any issues with that site. So we have enough bins to satisfy the needs of the residents and, um, that being waste and recycling bins, and we have not needed to fence that site in. So, um, it's been used properly. Uh, we do get the odd couch and, and fridge and, and that kind of thing, like, like we do at all the other bin sites, but the loose litter is not an issue because there are enough bins to satisfy the needs and the lids aren't left open and there's not garbage on the ground for animals to get into. So, um, we've been able to, to maintain some sites without actually going to the fencing requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Skarson?
Yeah, only since we're on the subjects of bins right now, I'll just bring up a, a concern that I keep on hearing over and over again with bins is, um, a lot of seniors and elderly people cannot open up bins and throw garbage in. And we've talked about this before. So it, just something to remind her, to keep on the back of your head that, um, I hear about it probably once a month or so that, uh, you know, little old lady can't get her garbage in because the bins are too high or there's no, she can't lift the lid, especially if it's windy or whatever. So it's something to, we need to be better at for sure. Just keep that in your, in your mind.
Yeah, we can discuss that in the future here, too. Yeah. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Thank you, sir. We're going to nine point three point one. Oh, sorry, Esther. It's a long ways from the heart. Do you need a tall stool or anything? Do we have such a thing or?
Uh, no, I shouldn't be up too, too long.
Okay.
Unless you guys ask me a bunch of hard questions.
We'll keep it, we'll keep it short today.
Okay.
I don't promise, though. Morning.
Good morning. I'm here today, uh, with a few members of our team to present to council the quarterly summary report for the months of April, May, and June twenty-twenty-two from the Planning and Community Services Department. Uh, this report is to keep council aware of the projects and activities within our department. As such, we have a few attachments to the report. Um, appendix A, you'll see our update from asset management and economic development areas. Appendix B is from our planning and development department and appendix C is from our parks, recreation, and culture. So I will start it off today and talk a bit about our asset management, uh, program, which, uh, just kicked off earlier this year. Following that, I'll have, um, Mr. Scott Kovach, uh, step up, our new economic development specialist, to talk about economic development. Then we'll have, uh, Lisa Foley come in, our planning and development manager. And then following that, um, both Rod Gittlebo and Bowen Clausen will come up and talk about park circuit culture. So on asset management, uh, there are three initiatives currently on the go, uh, for our new asset management program, um, that have been completed to date. Um, we have started the creation of an asset inventory registry. Um, we are currently doing this, uh, through existing software systems and our new asset management officer, uh, Puna DeWagen, um, is busy working with our GIS coordinator on pulling that all together. And we're also working with, uh, within the infrastructure department, um, to collect the information that we're looking for as we're starting with buildings and facilities, um, as part of our inventory structure. As, as that continues, site visits are scheduled over the summer with infrastructure services and our asset management team to go out and collect, um, boots-on-the-ground data on the facilities. As well, our change management activities, uh, we have put out an RFP and are now reviewing proposals for, uh, staff assessment training and engagement initiatives, just to confirm that the way we're rolling this out across the organization, we have all departments involved in a part of that process. We are also putting it out, an RFP here next week to conduct, uh, condition assessments on four of our major buildings to see where we're at as far as their condition goes, um, do an inventory of all the specific components within those buildings and, uh, again, feed into our main asset management, uh, registry. And then, uh, finally, we will be issuing an RFP later, uh, in the summer regards to, uh, setting up and selecting a software system to house all of this wonderful information. Any questions on asset management? Nope.
I guess we're going to take it easy on you.
Thank you.
Good job. Just looking...
We will continue and then at the end of, um, parks, record, and culture, then we'll be looking for a motion of council.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, I'll be presenting my, uh, report for economic development, uh, to the reef, through the rest of council. You have in front of you, um, a report of my first, uh, two and a half months, uh, with the organization. You'll see that, um, I've broken it up into several departments and I have, I certainly won't, uh, uh, read all of it. Uh, it was very important for me, uh, as I started to understand the, uh, the organization and meet with the departments and identify where there's opportunities or synergies for us to work together. Uh, I have met with marketing and communications, environment protective services, and planning and development and information technology to identify those synergies. In the, the first, uh, two and a half months, I've, uh, reached out to, uh, partner organizations that provide economic development, uh, services and support. They include the hub, um, Alberta Economy and Jobs Economy and Innovation, uh, the Cold Lake and Bonneville Agricultural Societies, LARA, Community Futures, the Chambers of Commerce, FCC, AFSC, Alberta Women Entrepreneurs, Portage College, which is very important as well, uh, real estate, uh, local real estate agents within the region, uh, and the economic development officers, uh, in the communities and with, uh, uh, First Nations, uh, within, um, the MD of Bonneville. Uh, several projects that have been completed or events that I've worked on. Uh, recently, the civilian pilot fly-in, which was a, a, a well-received event, and there's a potential tour, uh, possibly scheduled for twenty-twenty-three that we'd like to, um, stay in touch with and there's a possibility that that could, um, come to, uh, the Bonneville, uh, airport. Um, I attended a, a conference on behalf of the Alberta Community Planning Association. It was very, um, uh, informational as far as, uh, bringing down the barriers, uh, towards economic development through, uh, planning perspective. I worked with, uh, uh, Community Futures on procurement, um, specifically with, uh, Four Wing Cold Lake. Had an opportunity, from an industry perspective, to, um, be involved in a supply chain management event in, uh, Fort Saskatchewan. It was a great opportunity to understand how, uh, small and medium-sized businesses, uh, work with the larger, um, oil and natural gas, uh, companies specifically around procurement. Had an opportunity to meet all the, uh, proponents of, uh, economic development in the region, uh, at a meeting that was held here in, in our office. Uh, that was great and it, uh, led to, uh, further communications. Uh, I had an opportunity, um, at the direction of council to attend a primary care meeting in Cold Lake. Uh, it was very informative and it presented a, um, an alternative to, um, both, um, recruitment and retention, uh, for, um, uh, doctors and those involved in, uh, primary care. I had an opportunity as well, um, to attend the Alberta Hub AGM, which was, was very beneficial. Um, and in the past, uh, which you don't see in the report, which I, I've, I've added just because I think it's important most recently, um, uh, started work, uh, on the business registry and business visitations and had, um, uh, some great support from, uh, asset, uh, pardon me, from, uh, assessment, uh, as far as, um, identifying, um, sources for, uh, the business registry. And, uh, we've started to work on a micro-site for economic development, uh, working very well with, um, marketing and communications and to some degree with the Alberta Hub on a temporary basis to provide information. I've been working on, uh, ec- economic development newsletter and I've identified some possible opportunities in the future for myself as an economic development professional and for, uh, council and/or senior leadership to be involved in, um, uh, some industry events, uh, specifically the Carbon Capture Canada event, which is September twentieth to twenty-second in Edmonton. There's the Alberta Industrial Hub, uh, or Industrial Heartland Conference, which is September fifteenth. And for, um, next year, uh, the Petrochemical Summit, which will be held in Cannonaskis and is sponsored by, um, Alberta's Industrial Heartland. And that's, um, June, uh, twenty-twenty-three. That's, uh, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions, uh, council? Deputy Reeve Fadeev?
Morning. Thanks for, uh, being so active, trying to wrap your head around what the area has to offer. It's probably not a big change to what you're used to as far as the area goes. Uh, but have you been in touch with, uh, major industry regarding usage of the, uh, development of the MD of Bonneville Airport and, uh, what that might look like on their end as far as the need and as far as, uh, what council needs to be prepared for, uh, say in, you know, four or five years, uh, as far as development goes over there?
Uh, yes, um, uh, Reeve, through the council, uh, or assistant, no, sorry, Deputy Reeve?
Yep.
Yeah, so, uh, in an informal, uh, setting, I've had conversations, uh, with my director and with the CEO. And I have, um, had conversations with, um, uh, our, our granting staff in finance, uh, to wrap my head around what that opportunity is. Um, I have not been on site and I've not talked to the airport manager, but I have, uh, collected some data and had conversations that have identified some possibilities that exist. Uh, I would, it would be very presumptuous of me to, to make any statements at this point in time since I don't, um, either have enough background or direction from council or from CEO, uh, from council to the CEO to myself. Uh, but I am aware of, um, other communities that have had, uh, success in taking, uh, ownership of, uh, aerodomes or, or airports and use them to support, uh, industrial development and also to be involved in, um, uh, being involved to, to support, uh, other, um, subsidiary industries. For example, um, uh, I know that the Future Fighter Program is coming to this region for Four Wing Cold Lake. And with that, there'll be expansion and... And with that, there'll be expansion and opportunities that will involve aviation mechanics and drones and opportunities for warehousing and other opportunities. And as well, in other communities that I've been associated with, there have been opportunities for these airports to be fly-in airports from a recreational perspective for individuals and to have industrial land plots developed for hangar maintenance and warehousing associated with specific industries. Now, tha- that's all in general, and I guess that's my response. It's certainly something I look forward to working to, but haven't had, haven't been given specific direction for that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your...
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate that. Morning.
Morning, counsel. So today, I am presenting the Planning and Development Quarterly Report. So attached as Appendix B is the second quarterly report for 2022, covering the months of April, May, and June. So in the last three months, we have had 48 building permits for just over a total of $5.4 million. We've had 11 housing starts in the second quarter, which included nine single-family dwellings, one RTM, and one mobile home. We've issued 121 Safety Codes permits, with the majority to the MD of Bonneville, with just one issued to the Summer Village of Bonneville Beach. We have had seven new subdivision applications received in the last three months. Two new non-compliances were received, and we have resolved five of them. Four of them with permits issued and one with the non-compliance removed. And just some project updates. The municipality did receive notice from NRCB of an approval to construct a 1,700 beef finisher confined feeding operation on the northwest of 2063 of 3. So as per Section 618.2.1 of the Municipal Government Act, this application is not required to obtain a development permit from the municipality. So this is just for information only, in case you do get a resident inquiry. We have some updates on our two area structure plans that we're working on. So the Ardmore ASP, we have a draft document that has been created, and an open house was held on June 28th. Information received from this open house will be taken into consideration prior to a final draft being completed and the document brought forth to counsel for first reading. The Cherry Grove ASP is presently in the creation and development phase with a draft document being revised to encompass the greater area surrounding the hamlet of Cherry Grove. Initial public introduction and engagement has been planned, and there is an open house planned in Cherry Grove, July 27th, from 5 to 8. Planning and Development also did have the opportunity to do a two-day workshop last week with Jack Novak. So this workshop was highly focused on citizen engagement and creating an understanding on how to work with the general public. It was designed to help the department focus on customer service and transparency. And we're looking forward to implementing changes over the next few months and are excited to continue with the positive interaction we have with MD residents and assist them through the many planning processes.
Thank you. Any questions? Great job.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good morning, counsel. I'm here to talk to you guys about our Parks and Recreation projects that we got going on and kind of give you an update on where those are all sitting. I'll just go through each one here a little bit, briefly touch on them. And so the Angling Lake Boat Launch, still unfortunately sitting at the provincial level for approval. We continue to check on that. Nothing has really happened there yet, so. The Ardmore and Cherry Grove Outdoor Rinks, kind of sitting around the same stage. Basically, the rinks are complete. It's the warm-up shacks at each location that we're just tidying up a few loose ends with some of the services that are going into each of the warm-up shacks. But those are near completion as well. The Cold Lake Campground Boat Launch, that is actually sitting at the FNC stage there that, still discussion going back and forth happening with our engineers and First Nation consultation. So we're still working through that process. The Cold Lake Campground Expansion, that is, the B Loop is now officially open. Campers have been able to go in there since July 1st and had a good response, good feedback. Things are going well there. The C Loop is now currently just on hold until fall. Our contractor that's working there is, is now working on the trail project, which I'll go over that here at the end. I'm gonna skip down to Lacorey Rec Park. Bowen's gonna talk on the stuff in, in between there. So basically, the Lacorey Rec Park is sitting in a place where it's, it's basically almost finished. Just a little bit of landscaping hap- to happen with some of the dirt berms that are, we need to finish in there. The weather's been a problem for us to, to get in there and, and finish that up. But now this week with good weather, we are looking to make that happen, so. And the MD Trail Project, basically, the, the brushing actually is complete. The contractor there now has started on the trail with the excavation and cutting portion of that. So things are looking good there. Things are moving along well. The Muriel Lake Seasonal Camping, sorry, the, just the Muriel Lake project that we had submitted through the province. We did receive approval recently on that. And we're looking to, we're now sitting, we admit to sitting down together and coming up with a plan that basically involves our equestrian groups and the seasonal camping portion that was approved there. And we'll be bringing that back to counsel with some ideas on that, so. The Vezzo Beach Boat Launch mooring system there, launch and mooring, that is, the tender for that is actually being posted right away. Basically, we're looking probably at this week, so. That's where we are with that.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Councillor. Skarsen.
I have a couple. So just so with the Vezzo. So you're saying the approvals are done over there, then?
Through the Reeve, Councillor Skarsen, yes, for the boat launch, you're talking?
Yeah.
Yes, so the approvals are all in place. Tender's, is going out for, for construction.
And then, is there issues there right now with the boat launch? I've heard some stories there that...
Through the Reeve, right now, we actually have fixed the launch. What was happening there was just erosion, quite a bit of erosion along the edge of the boat launch. We actually got a TFA, Temporary Field Approval, to go in there and put rocks along the side of that boat launch in the water. And that's fixed the problem. A lot of our boaters are happy with that, sort of a temporary fix. And that's about all we could really do with that at, at the time. So adding some rocks along the edge of that drop-off that was causing a lot of problems for our boaters.
Okay. And then the other one was, there's no mention here about any of the other boat launches that you guys are doing? I know Birch Grove was starting today or this week, right?
Yeah, through the Reeve. Yeah, so those, the progress, or the situation there is Birch Grove, today, they're actually, the launch has been put in place. We had our silt fencing go in, electrofishing process. And then the launch dug out the old one and the new one going in. So it's a week process just because you have to let the sediment, you know, settle in the water. And then we can remove our silt fencing and, and on to the next one. So Birch Grove, by the end of Friday, will be completed and open. And then on to Pelican Point's Boat Launch for Monday, so.
Okay. And lastly, we, we had discussed a while back about the swing at the Venture Park. So we, what's the update on that? Are we, is it gonna be open soon, or?
Through the Reeve, I'm, I'm gonna let Bowen comment on that, just on the Kinnisou update.
Yeah, Councillor Crick, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I've got a couple of questions as well. The Angling Lake, so you were waiting on the approvals. How long has that been in approvals? And I guess then the other part of the question is, should I be contacting like the MLA and asking him to kind of speed that up if he can, or?
Through the Reeve, Councillor Crick. So from what I understand, the cave yet, there was, there were some staff changes at the province level, which caused more delays there. But I believe MLA Hanson has, has got involved with that, I believe. So that's kind of helping a little bit. I, I don't have a whole lot of information on that. But it sounds like the first person who was to receive the application has now reviewed it and passed it on to the next person. So I'm not sure if their internal process is there, but... So it has moved from one's, one stage to another internally there, so.
Okay. Thank you. And then next question is the rink in Fort Kent. Is that gonna be repaired and operational for winter?
Through the Reeve, yes. We'll make sure that that's operational for the winter, for sure. That's definitely on our project list for bringing forward for, for budget season. But, but as for this season, we'll make sure it's up and running and fixed and repaired, so.
Okay, awesome. And lastly, the, the Muriel Lake for the equestrian stuff. Are you guys reaching out to the, some of the equestrian people, like the people with the horses and getting their input as well on this?
Through the Reeve, yes. Yeah, I've spoke to one individual already from one of the horse groups, and she is, she's definitely expressed a lot of interest in, in working with us and helping us maybe make sure that we get this, get this right and, and providing, you know, amenities that, that would be helpful to them. So yeah, we're definitely gonna make sure we involve the horse community.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, Deputy Reeve Fadib, and then Councillor Sutcher.
Just in regards to the Cold Lake MD campground there, the boat launch and mooring end of it, says delayed due to FNC. So is the engineering group, like mitigating on behalf of us? Or how's that work, or is, and why is an engineering group, I guess, mitigating on behalf of the province and us? Like, I'm, I'm really confused why an engineering group would be involved in, in trying to mitigate stuff. That's, that's all.
Through the Reeve, Councillor Fadib. So you, you, you're asking why the, the engineering firm is involved in the FNC process?
Yeah, because I mean, it's, it should be some, you know, some, some pretty clear guidelines by the province saying, these are the requirements to meet FNC requests. And if we meet those or exceed those, then it should be, here you go, here's your approval. I, I don't understand this back and forth for the last year.
Well, through the Reeve, they are, I mean, they're representative in, in this, in, for the contract, for the project. We're also involved as well. So they do keep us well informed of what the communications that are going back and forth. And so we have, we have participated in, in those discussions as well, Bowen and myself, for the MD. So we are well aware of what they're asking for. But the lead on it is, is Tetra Tech, so that's the way it's, it's been going.
Yeah, just, yeah. Okay, I kind of get it, I guess, maybe. I don't like that, you know, the goalpost keeps getting moved. And I think that's probably my biggest complaint. There's no clear guidance from the province as to what that exactly looks like. And puts everybody in a bind, so. Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. Councillor Sutcher?
Yeah, I just want to say good job on the Lacorey Rec Park and likes to be, see, get completion soon. But I know last year, we were looking, there was something mentioned about boat launches and rivers. Was that, is there any information on that? Like the last council mentioned, boat, boat launches on the Beaver River?
Through the Reeve, Councillor Sutcher. We, we still are sort of at the very preliminary stages of discussing that. We have involved our environmental coordinator, kind of looking over some of the sites. You know, we're, that's kind of where it's at. We are looking at a few different locations that would be maybe ideal for that. We're, we're not experts certainly in-house, so we would have to go outside to, to help us with that because dealing with a river or creeks, flowing creeks, that's a totally different animal, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're still looking at, because I know that river is utilized by a lot of residents in the community during the summer. If we can improve it for them, it'd be nice.
Yeah, through the Reeve. We're definitely haven't forgotten about them. It is on our list, just that we don't have a whole lot to report at this point, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. I guess I want to, Bowen?
Well, Mr. Reeve and counsel. I don't know, there, there is a delegation waiting...
Are they here?
If you wanted to...
It's 10, yeah.
Wait for that.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then I'll take the delegation. Thanks. Okay, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize, we're, we made the Cold Lake chambers wait for a while here. So welcome, they're having a presentation this morning, so come on up.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So we're here for two reasons today. The first one being our Feast at the Beach event, which I'll run through relatively quickly here, five, eight minutes, to leave a little bit more time for our second delegation, which is regarding a, a new healthcare initiative that the chamber has taken on, that, you know, there'd probably be a lot more questions around. So I'll start with this one here, and then I'll hand it over for that one. So thank you for allowing us to be here today. My name is Ryan LeFave, and I'm the President of the Cold Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce. And with me today is Sherry Buckle, our Executive Director. And we're here today to ask for financial support for our upcoming Feast at the Beach, scheduled for Labor Day weekend. Feast at the Beach was a dream of, of an ambitious board of directors of the Cold Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce to bring family-friendly food, music, and entertainment to the shores of Cold Lake. The Kinnisou Beach was an ideal location to host all of our festival-goers. In 2019 was our inaugural year. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to host it since. But in that year, approximately 10,000 people attended the event from the Lakeland Region and beyond. It was two days held over the Labor Day weekend. Attendees have arranged food trucks, children's activities, incredible entertainment, and much more to enjoy. There's something for everyone, and it's free, which is, you know, a big draw for those families. They can just come down and, and, you know, set up their tent and grab some food and... So securing grants and sponsorships is what allows us to offer this kind of summer wind-up festival for free. However, due to the short timeframe of the decision to move ahead with the event, we missed an opportunity to apply for provincial and federal grants. With that said, we must raise $75,000 in cash sponsorship just to show a nominal profit of $12,000, should all expenses come in as projected. And those are from food truck commissions and the beer gardens. By keeping this event free, our event is attended by people from all walks of life and financial status. The great thing about the event is that you can fill your picnic cooler, load up the family, and hop on our free shuttle to get dropped off right at the event entrance. For many in our community, this is the only way that they can attend. In 2019, the MD was gracious enough to sponsor our event in the amount of $10,000. This was matching with the City of Cold Lake's financial contribution. As the sponsorship has changed since then, and your grant application supports up to a maximum of $5,000, we're here before you today to ask for an additional $5,000 to match the 2022 City of Cold Lake sponsorship. And just for reference, that $10,000 platinum sponsorship includes site signage, media opportunities, social media shout-outs, and logos on all print ads, meet and greet opportunities, radio mentions, logos on print ads, and your logo and link to your website on the Feast at the Beach website. So we would like to thank you for your time today and consideration for your request. And I can answer any questions if you do have some.
All right, any questions? Okay, saying none, thank you for your presentation, and then we'll go to Stage Two.
Just, just one question. So regards to your food vendors, do you guys kind of have like 50 more or something like that?
We, we've been pushing as hard as we can to get more. I think we have eight registered right now. We're hoping to get 12 by, by the, by the time the weekend rolls around, yeah.
I suppose those guys are pretty hard to get now, too.
Yeah, it, it's been difficult with COVID because a lot of them are still like either ramping up or they closed and they, you know, haven't started again. So it's kind of tough finding those ones. And then a lot of them, because there's, you know, very few in the area, they have to travel from, from the rest of Alberta, right? So to get them booked to come up for the weekend.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Second phase, okay. So we all know that physician recruitment and retention, and not only physician, but healthcare practitioners are a issue in our area. You know, just last night, there was no physician in the ER in Cold Lake. So it's been ongoing for many years, and the chamber has repeatedly heard from industry and our members' businesses that it's, it's causing them an issue in retaining and attracting employees to our area because the state of and reputation of... because the state of and reputation of our healthcare, um, you know, is pretty well-known. Um, so we decided to engage 143 Healthcare Consulting after initial visit of meeting Stacy and Colleen and, uh, and to learn about their business. Um, they have some ideas that are innovative and can bring a new solution to the healthcare problem to our region. Uh, the initial engagement by the chamber, uh, to create pretty much, um, you know, this presentation and, uh, and for them to do some investigation, environmental scans, and and some stakeholder relations, um, cost the chamber $25,000, which, you know, we were happy to take on to start the process. Uh, so, um, what they also completed is a high-level business plan to be able to show how, you know, something like this could work. So to complete this project, um, which is about another roughly 40 weeks of work, uh, is going to cost $85,000. And we're looking to our community partners, uh, to to fund the balance of that. So we're asking each municipality, the, uh, City of Cold Lake and yourselves, for $30,000 each. And then we're, um, talking to industry and various other stakeholders in our community to come up with the balance of that, uh, you know, roughly 25,000. Um, so with that, I will intro- introduce Stacy and Colleen from 143 Healthcare Consulting to, uh, to go over their presentation. I'll give you a a very brief introduction. Colleen McKinstry is a healthcare executive with over 30 years' experience in healthcare, education, finance, and not-for-profit industry. Her focus has included acute care nursing, education, home care, primary care, and management. Colleen most recently served as a clinical primary director of the Camrose Primary Care Network. And Stacy Stirltruck is a healthcare executive with over 20 years' experience in the government healthcare and not-for-profit industry. Stacy most recently served as the Executive Director for the Camrose PCN, collaborating with patients, stakeholders, and healthcare professionals to provide enhanced team-based primary care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies.
Thank you very much, Reeve and Counsel, for opportunity today to have this conversation. And, uh, if you just bear with me for a couple of minutes, I'd just like to share a quick story, uh, and and I think you'll see some relevance. I'm I'm very much, uh, excited to be in this area, uh, and part of the reason for that is, earlier on, uh, my brother actually, uh, played for the Bonneville Pontiacs. And, uh, he was barely 17 years old when he came. And I remember him coming and coming to tryouts and they said, "Yeah, you've made the team." And we sort of looked at him and went, "Oh, my goodness, what does this mean?" And he said, "Don't worry." He said, "The community will take care of me." And the community did take care of him. He had a wonderful experience. It made him really the man he is today. Uh, some of you may know him. He's the Commissioner of the Alberta Junior Hockey League. And this experience that he had here was, uh, very much, uh, something that he fondly remembers. He still to this day talks about a rink attendant, uh, his name is Milt. And so you can see how, when you're invested, uh, with individuals and, uh, community, great things can happen. And in the spirit of it sort of takes a village, uh, the same thing can be said about healthcare. And it's no longer just about, uh, the siloed approach of physicians or healthcare professionals or community stakeholders. It's actually about collaboration and figuring out what scope and what skill and what expertise you can bring to helping to support your community and individuals in your community to be healthy. Because when you have a healthy community, you're also gonna have a healthy economy. And that's part of the reason why Colleen and I were so excited about being able to work with the chamber, because the chamber recognized this. The chamber recognized that it needed to be engaged, and they understood what it meant to have a healthy community and then therefore resulting in a healthy economy. And so 143 came on board in March. And we were asked as part of Phase One in our Statement of Work to put together sort of an environmental scan, uh, to look at, you know, potential options or recommendations that we felt would be advantageous for this area to better promote patient-centered care. And so over the next 10 minutes, 15 minutes or so, what I'm gonna do is talk today about those recommendations and how we got there. And also give a little bit of time for you to ask some questions with respect to what this potential model could look like and the impact that it could have on on patients, families, caregivers, and your community as a whole. So we know that the environment now and the messaging now is changing a little bit because the conversation around healthcare is now more on collaborative, team-based care. And it's a lot more about changing the type of funding model that is available to physicians and healthcare professionals. And we're seeing that now. We're seeing that in the news where we've got the President of the Canadian Medical Association coming out and saying, "The system has to change." Right? We need to look at different ways of delivering healthcare. We look at different ways of compensating physicians and healthcare professionals. This is a big step. This is something we've talked about, those of us that have worked in the system for a long time. But to see physicians and healthcare professionals that are in leadership roles start to use the same language and support it is a big shift, and it's a shift to the positive. We know that the big pillars that we need to address speak to integration. So again, how do we work as a village, as a community? It speaks to payment. So again, how do we look at different payment and compensation models? It also speaks to technology, right? And we saw a huge uptick of virtual care during COVID. We need to continue that, and we can continue it in a safe, collaborative way that still offers good patient outcomes. And the last is the leadership piece. So again, when we start to have physicians and healthcare professionals step up in their leadership roles and have conversation about this, we need to take advantage of that because we can't do it alone and we can't do it without them. Really quickly, uh, you've seen this in your package. We also know that expenditures are rising, right? And it's not just because of COVID. Healthcare expenditures in Canada, we haven't seen these types of like increases over 30 in over 30 years. That will not go down. We will not see a decrease. The expenditure per Canadian is just over $8,000 per Canadian. And we're almost topping that out in Alberta already at just over 8,000 per patient. And we know that Alberta is looking seriously at this as well, right? Because 40% of that budget is going to health, 40%. And so we're having some of those conversations now about cost-effectiveness, using population health data, the patient experience, the provider experience, and now the fifth element, which is equity. And I think we all can congre- can agree those pillars are important. We see the premiers in BC having conversation about increasing the healthcare payments that come to the provinces. But what we're also hearing loud and clear for the first time in a long time is the concept of accountability. And that's not a bad thing. So if we are gonna be spending these dollars in healthcare, then we should be knowing where those dollars are going and what we're getting from them. So there is a shift in the healthcare landscape. And again, Colleen, Colleen and I were very excited to to be contacted and and work with the chamber because they see this shift and they wanna be a part of it. Again, healthy people, healthy economies, healthy communities. And that's really the driving factor as to why we decided to work with the chamber, why we've come out and had these types of conversations. And ultimately, we hope that we'll be able to move to a Phase Two approach where we can actually start to put together some logistics and some some ideas and ultimately a model that can be congruent with current models that are in place. So I think everyone's sort of familiar with the traditional model that we have today, which is a fee-for-service model. Colleen and I are certainly not here to say, "That's a bad model. We need to remove it. We need to go in a different direction." That's not us for us to decide. There's some physicians that choose to work in a fee-for-service model because that's the service model that they want to work in. But we also know that we have other physicians, mostly newer grads, that actually are wanting to consider to work in a different type of model, which we like to refer to as an alternative relationship model. And that's the model that we presented as far as recommendations for the Cold Lake Ketchman area. We know that there's physicians that are working in a fee-for-service model. What we're suggesting and recommending is that we can start to create a different type of model where physicians are compensated more like an employee, so they have a salary. They have vacation. They have benefits. They have a retirement plan. And we can really truly start to have those conversations that are truthful when we recruit and retain physicians to say, "Yes, we can offer you work-life balance." Because in most cases, when we do start to move to an alternative relationship plan, those physicians and healthcare professionals, they actually can come to their clinic on time. And they can leave their clinic on time, and they can actually go home and enjoy the community with their families. And this is a big driver for physicians in particular, but healthcare professionals as a whole. And so that is part of our recommendation that we make. We very much look to tailor our model in the Ketchman area population that we have. So we know that every population looks and feels a little bit different. Some have a higher chronic disease management component. So we may have more people with diabetes. We may have more people with high blood pressure. We may have a higher geriatric population. We may have a higher First Nation population. So Colleen and I very much vet through that information to start to create a model and recommendations that really target the dollars and start to focus in on those initiatives that have the best impact or the best return on investment for the population. And so you'll see in your package that there's a number of links and a number of stats that really start to drill down what exactly your community and your profile looks like. And we do that because we obviously care about the patient population, but it also helps us when we start to attract and retain healthcare professionals. We can actually have conversations with them to say, "When you come and practice in this area, this is probably what you're gonna see." And it also helps us to create and fund a budget that speaks to the type of supports and multidisciplinary team that we need. And so if we do have a higher level of diabetics, then we probably will need to fund a diabetic educator, right? So this type of a model really starts to, uh, be a bit more laser-focused on the community and what the community needs are. So this can't be done again in silos. We know that there's a number of community partners and community key community stakeholders that can offer, uh, some skill and scope and expertise in this type of a model. And so whether that is, uh, the primary care network, uh, whether that may be Covenant Health, whether that might be Alberta Health Services, whether that might be the Canadian Mental Health Association, we start to look at how we can gather the appropriate, uh, stakeholders to come together so that we start to maximize our funding and we start to maximize our scope. Because we know that everyone is in a shortage for physicians and healthcare professionals. We hear about it, we see it every day. And so this type of recommendation and model really starts to, again, laser-focus us in on what do we need for a multidisciplinary team? Which stakeholders can offer that skill or expertise? And how do we put everybody's funding on the table so that we start to maximize that funding for better overall patient outcomes? And the example I'll give you is that we know currently in the system that nurse practitioners are only funded by government if they're attached to a primary care network. So conversations that happen, right, in the media and in the community about, "Oh, we should utilize more nurse practitioners" is a great concept, but we don't have the funding model to actually do that without a primary care network involved. And so unless an entity is really wanting to hire a nurse practitioner on their own as an employee because we know a nurse practitioner can't bill, the only real funding avenue to access a nurse practitioner is through a primary care network. So that's an example of how this type of a recommendation and model would, again, look to maximize everybody's strength, right? Everybody's bench strength, so that we can create an overall holistic patient medical home that everyone can access. So the path forward and what we put forward to the chamber and our meeting that we had and we presented on in June, and then for the package that you had in your, uh, agenda package today, really talks about that alternative relationship plan. It talks about potentially having one or two physicians that are interested in working in this type of model. It also includes nurse practitioners and physician assistants. And we see this as really being a gift that this Ketchman area has because you are already familiar with nurse practitioners and physician assistants. And so to be able to integrate them into the primary care sector is actually a little bit easier and accepted than it would be in other parts of the province. And we're also very clear on our recommendation that we understand that Alberta Health Services and in Bonneville Covenant Health, they have their role and responsibility in the acute care setting. We're really focused on the primary care setting. And when we talk about primary care, most people recognize that as it's your first point of contact into the healthcare system, usually seeing your family doctor. What we talk about is primary healthcare, where again, we sort of up our game by including all those other stakeholders that are involved in an individual's social determinants of health. Because we know that it's not so often that traditional clinical issue that individuals are struggling with, but it may be a social determinant of health. So they may not have the money to have the food on the table that they need. Or they may not have the transportation to be able to work. And all of these things combined have an impact on their health. So for us, when we talk about recommendations, we know that Alberta Health Services and Covenant Health have a very big role to play in the healthcare system from an acute care and sometimes a continuing care environment. But where we wanna focus on is in primary care because we wanna focus on prevention. We wanna reduce the number of visits to emergency. We wanna reduce the number of admissions. We wanna reduce the number of readmissions, and we wanna reduce the number of length of stay. Because we know if we care for individuals in their community, then your emergency departments and your hospitals as a whole will be able to function in the role and responsibility and scope that they were built for. And you know, and your family and caregivers know that if it's an acute care need and you need to go to the hospital, you're gonna be cared for in a timely manner. So for us, this is very much a focus on primary care, and our recommendation to the chamber has very much been to stay within the primary care space. So some of times we be, we're asked the question of, you know, are, is this type of a model functioning somewhere else, right? And so what we did is offered two examples, uh, one for Crowfoot and the other in Tabor that have actually been functioning in a multidisciplinary team, alternative relationship plan model for a number of years. And they've done this because they've recognized that they too had a physician and healthcare professional, uh, recruitment and retention issue. And so they had to look at a different model that allowed everyone to work to their full scope in order to maximize the care that they were providing to their Ketchman area. And a couple of years ago, the Health Quality Council of Alberta was asked to do a bit of a study on both models to offer some, uh, suggestions and factors with respect to, most importantly, cost savings, right? And so you'll see in your package and on the infograph that's actually on the screen that that really was a, uh, big factor that was looked at in the study. And you can see that over that 10-year savings, And you can see that over that 10-year savings, you know, you're averaging probably between, you know, an estimated $60 million that can be put back and reinvested into the system over a 10-year period. If you reduce that to annual savings, you're still looking at a pretty good number. You can still do a lot with $7 million or $4 million and reinvest that into the system. And so this evidence is there. This type of a model is not new. It very much was initiated in Europe. We've had a number of minister representation and association representation going and looking at these models. The question always comes to us, "Well, what's taking Alberta so long?" It's still new to them. It's still new. And so we're looking for opportunity where we can actually bring this to locations that actually have a lot of the pieces that are here, we just need to knit them together. And we see this area as being one of those spaces. So we did offer a bit of a visual for you to see with what it looks like when you actually create a patient medical home model in a community that looks at what we talked about the pillars before, right? So we're looking at improved patient outcomes, lowering of cost, improved provider and patient experience and health equity. And when we show this, we preface it by saying, "This is your Cadillac model, right? This is a high-functioning patient medical home." We're not saying that this is something that can happen overnight. We also talk about not boiling the ocean, but we do feel, and our recommendations will show, that we can start towards this model by creating a multidisciplinary team with physicians and healthcare professionals that are practicing to their full scope, with a different compensation model that allows for both professional satisfaction, patient satisfaction, and cost efficiency. But you can see that there's a lot of growth that can happen once that foundation is built, and you can start to enhance your primary care in all these different areas dependent upon what you feel is the need from a community. And so this is very much a journey, and it's a marathon and not a sprint, but we feel that there's the base here to be able to commence with a multidisciplinary team in a different way quite quickly, and that is our recommendation. So it's often asked, again, about cost, right? And so Colleen and I took the opportunity to put together a bit of a draft budget. And so what this is showing you is really sort of what it would take to operate this type of a clinic. So this is taking a full revenue stream through the alternative relationship plan from the Alberta government, placing it over, paying for physicians, taking a bit for overhead, and then what it would take to actually fund the remainder of that multidisciplinary team as well as your day-to-day operations. And the reason that Colleen and I show this is obviously, number one, to be open and transparent, but number two, to start to have those conversations that are so key and important. And I'll go back again to my original story about "It Takes a Village." In this type of a model, this is very much a community-empowered, community-engaged type of model. Because we want stakeholders to come and look at this and say, "You know what? This is important to me. I have kids, I have grandkids, I have nieces, I have nephews, I have parents. I know that I want a healthcare system that's going to be sustainable for them. I also know that I'm involved in IT management. When I look at this and I see what the cost is for IT management, I'm going to provide that. My company's going to provide that in kind, right?" Or we have industry that says, "You know what? We want to do something to show that we're reinvesting into the community. Well, we see that your virtual care platform is going to cost you X number of dollars to run for the year. We're actually going to put those dollars in to cover that cost." And so you start to look at all these pieces of the puzzle, and by being open and transparent, individuals, stakeholders, companies, industries, they can come to the table and take some ownership of this to say, "Hey, I'm going to contribute to the healthcare system, and this is how I'm doing it." And we've had much success with that PPP, right? Where now we're actually transitioning that type of a model into the healthcare system, and it works. So, again, we wanted to make sure that we put this together. It's not set in stone, it's a draft budget, but the whole concept of this is to really show that, again, this is about community ownership and engagement. So our next steps, Phase One is now complete, as Ryan mentioned. So we have done the environmental scan, we've done the high-level business plan and recommendations, which you have in your package. And so for us now, if this is to move forward, Phase Two is really starting the stakeholder engagement, looking at what a clinic space design would look like, and whether that means building out a new space, renovating a current space, expanding another, putting some recommendations to forward around design, implementation, and then working behind the scenes with Alberta Health in order to get the alternative relationship plan signed. And of course, these things take a little bit of work. However, the key factor here to consider is that we are transitioning into an election year, and sometimes things move a little quicker when we're moving into an election year. And the asks sometimes seem to get moved up the pile a little bit quicker. And so for us, it's very important to utilize the window that we're in, not from only the perspective of you being ready as a Ketchman area, but government being ready and potentially a new government wanting to be ready to be able to go into an election year. So the ask is really quite positive for both. So, again, I know that was really quick, and I appreciate the time that you gave us. I wanted to leave a couple minutes for questions if you so choose, and I'll ask my colleague, Colleen McKinsey, to join me. She's a lot of the brain power behind this, and so I'd be remiss of not having her join and answer some of these questions. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Questions? Yeah, Deputy Reeve.
Morning. Thanks for working in a complex system. Just in regards to AHS, pretty well down to it, we have two different communities here. Covenant Health, 50% of our residents use the Bonneville area, 30% use the Cold Lake. Do you see this system working in both areas? And AHS approval, I know there's been a lot of communities that have gone down to the doctor recruitment part of it, and they spent tons of money getting to it to get really excited to get a bunch of doctors in for AHS to squash that idea. Yeah, those are kind of the concerns that, you know, that I have. And, yeah, I mean, it's, on paper, it sounds really good, but, but tell us more.
So I'll speak to your first question with respect to Alberta Health Services and Covenant Health. And so Colleen and I have experienced, obviously, working with both. Being in Camrose, we were very much aligned with Covenant Health, and our other clients that we worked after leaving the PCN are very much AHS-focused. We don't see that as being a barrier. It's, again, about building a relationship, and it's, again, about trying to figure out that warm hand-over-formula where the offerings that we're doing in primary care actually have a very big impact in a positive way to the hospital and to continuing care. And once we start to have those conversations, those barriers seem to be reduced. I know that the conversation that goes on about physician recruitment and retention from an Alberta Health Services perspective is a difficult one, right? And there are a lot of checkpoints when you're using Alberta Health Services to recruit a physician, because most often those physicians are international medical graduates, they come with a sponsorship, they come with an assessment period, and it is difficult sometimes to navigate that. And oftentimes, those physicians are being prioritized for hospital, right? They're being prioritized for acute care. And if they have some time to do some primary care, that's just icing on the cake. But in our scenario, our focus is on primary care. So when we would go to attract and recruit physicians, we would look for physicians that were either Canadian grads, or we would look for physicians that have gone through their sponsorship, so they've completed their three-year service agreement, and they're actually now on the general register for the college, and they no longer have any terms or conditions put on them from Alberta Health Services to complete that sponsorship. And so those would be the physicians that we would be targeting in order to work in this type of a practice. And it actually tends to lean in that direction, because you do have physicians that start out, they see that fee-for-service model, but then they get a little older, they start to have a family, those priorities change, and they want to spend more time with their family. And so the concept of an alternative relationship plan is actually way more appealing to them at that part of their career, and those are the ones that we actually look to, to bring on in this type of a model. So there is, you know, a bit of a concept for both and a priority for both, but in our case, again, because we're focusing on primary care, that's the type of physician that we would look to.
Yeah, I think the system right now is, it's, there's some definite challenges to it. I know I've been in, you know, in around the Cold Lake area forever, and I haven't had a family doctor in like 18 years, so my PCN is really my doctor, and it's been amazing. You know, thank you for all the data. I want to really give a shout-out to the Cold Lake Chamber for taking $25,000 bucks out of their budget to get this done. On page 12, I was kind of, Cold Lake Community Data Continued. Boy, we like, it's, like, we're the baby capital of the province, and we have, and we also have a, an area that is getting up there in age as well, right? So we have, yeah, definitely have a place where we can be very, very busy, and we don't have the manpower to do it. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, sounds good.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, I don't really have a question, but I just, a comment, and it's, I think it's fantastic, and it's something, you know, we need to be looking outside the box to the way things have worked for the last 100 years here, and because they don't work anymore, really, and we see it all the time in Cold Lake, especially. We need to do things differently, and I think this plan here looks really good, and I'd love to learn more about it, and I fully endorse option number one, bringing back that request for that funding and looking for this. So do you, is there, I didn't really hear mentioned, is there a site in mind? Like, do you have a, where would you house this exactly?
We haven't identified a site right now, because it's Cold Lake Chamber. I'm sure that that's the area that we'll be looking at, but it doesn't mean that there can't, this can't be a model that can be utilized in other, you know, nearby areas, that sort of thing.
I guess, I mean, like, would it be, would it be in a hospital, or would it be in a clinic somewhere, or would it be attached to something? Like, what is it typically, or is it on its own standalone somewhere else?
Yeah, definitely, we would be hoping that it would not be located in a hospital, and that's just from the general perspective, that if, the more times you go, somebody, a patient travels to the hospital, the sicker they become, right? Which is kind of an inverse way of thinking, but, you know, if you go there for something minor, oftentimes, you can, often, you know, that can progress to something worse. So we'd like to see it as a standalone site. However, saying that, you know what? It's really built on a collaborative relationship, and so, you know, if there's something already going that the community decides that, you know what, we want to just be an adjunct onto that, and that they are already really encouraged by this type of a model, then we would collaborate together with them. So it's really open for investigation and really do the best thing for the community, for the patient, and for, that will support this type of a model.
Yeah, and then the other thing was, and you may have mentioned, I didn't really hear it, but like, funding as far as the cost from the patient, like, is it, is this something that was covered by Alberta Healthcare, let's say, or is it more of a insurance policy plan, or is it a step closer to privatization?
No, straight, as you would go to see your physician in your team now, would be no different.
Yeah.
Excuse me. With your, in your discussions with medical professionals and all that, what's their positive, or do they have positive feedback on all this? What kind of feedback have you got back from your physicians?
So obviously, for us, it's important to have those conversations with the current physician and healthcare professional team. However, at this point, we chose not to engage too far, because our real ask was to come back to the chamber with an environmental scan on sort of the population health and our recommendations. And so we know that change is hard, right, for everyone, but specifically for healthcare professionals and physicians. And so we didn't want to get out too far ahead and have those conversations, because quickly, things tend to move towards, "Well, this decision has already been made, and it's been made for me." And we know that the response to that is not a positive one. And so for us, we're just doing a bit of a temperature check overall in the province, and we know where physicians are right now in the province as far as being burnt out, as far as wanting more work-life balance, better and different compensation. So we've taken it more from a higher level, and we haven't really drilled down to the physician and healthcare professionals too far in the Cold Lake environment, because really, most often, they'll just ask for details, right? How much am I going to be paid? What is this going to look like? What's my overhead? And so for us, we wanted to do the legwork behind the scenes to create sort of the model that we were wanting to recommend, and then we'll have something more tangible to be able to go to the physician membership and the healthcare professionals to say, "Hey, if you'd like to practice in this new model, this is what it looks like. These are the logistics, this is what you're going to be paid, this is what they ask of you if you come and work, and this is what you're going to get from it." So maybe a bit of, considered to be a bit of a backward approach, but for us, I think we've got over a combined 50 years of doing this now. We tend to be the ones to want to be more detail-oriented when we actually come to physicians and healthcare professionals than just offer them a bit of a blank slate and saying, "Well, what do you think?"
Thank you for that, and thank you for going forward, thinking outside the box, trying something different here.
Just, I have one more question, it might relate to the Cold Lake Chamber. So are you guys, I mean, you guys are taking the lead on this, Mr. Lefave, but are you guys working with Hearts for Healthcare on this as well, or is it just a?
Yeah, so we engaged, we actually met with Hearts last night after going to council in front of city yesterday. So certainly, that's, you know, a portion of, we're asking 30 of each municipality, that extra 25, you know, a request was made from Hearts, and then we're looking at other industry as well to fill that gap. So certainly, they're, you know, they're asked to be a part of it. You know, Stacy and Colleen mentioned, like, the community needs to be a part of this to get it off the ground, right? We need all stakeholders at the table to push it forward. So we're certainly looking to our partners to be able to achieve that.
Nice, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anything else from you guys?
Thank you so much for finding time for us, we really appreciate it, and thank you for the questions.
So, yeah, on behalf of the MD, we thank you for coming, and we'll take another recess here, and motion first, and then we'll take a recess.
Thank you.
Just looking for a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion for option number one.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the presentation by Cold Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce Information and furthermore directs administration to bring back additional information regarding their request for funding, support for the upcoming Feast at the Beach event, and ongoing team-based primary care alternative relationship plan, ARP, to improve healthcare delivery in the region to future meetings of council for consideration. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor?
Yeah, just, I guess, one quick thing. So you mentioned some timelines there. Is, I guess, when are you hoping? You mentioned the election and all that stuff. Is this like this year kind of thing still, or next few months, or next year?
We targeted 12 months ago.
12 months.
Any other discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. We'll take another five-minute break. Okay, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. I guess we're going to Bowen now, talking on Canoosa a bit, I guess, eh?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and counsel. So just to finish off on some of these project updates, so the... So the inter-ministerial trails master plan is in the engagement phase. So there's currently surveys are out online and and they're also going to be touching base with certain stakeholders to engage with them. So that that process is underway now. The green chairlift is at the they've completed the pilings and now they're welding on the cap plates for those pilings. And the cement foundations are going to begin pouring. I think even today, they they mowed in yesterday, went through our safety orientation and and so they're getting ready to start pouring those foundations and stuff. So that is progressing nicely in spite of the the weather that has been a challenge. It's very, very muddy and stuff. But so that that is a very good. Doppelmeyer is also on site too. They're they're overseeing the pouring. And then once that is done, they're anticipating around a four-week period to complete that. Then they'll start placing towers on on those. So it's looking very good with that. The adventure park, we're still waiting on some parts. I know Counselor Scarsen asked about the swing. We're still waiting on parts from Germany. And once they come, then we can get that certified through ADIRS. Unfortunately, it's because of the coming from Germany, it's delayed those. So but they we did receive email actually just last night saying that we should hopefully see them in the next couple of weeks. So that's hopeful there to get the swing finished. They finished the perimeter fence around the site just yesterday. So that looks really good. And, yeah, the tickets and everything, it's been picking up quite nicely on people going out there. I know Sunday was actually a record day so far. It was very busy, I think around a hundred and sixty. People went through the the parks, so that was it was nice to see. And then obviously on the restaurant, people are cycling through and ice cream is a big a big deal. So that's it's that's that's a good thing there. The kitchen upgrades, that is the RFP is out right now and that closes tomorrow. So we'll see what that that comes back with and then we'll go from there. That work will take place just after we we close the adventure park and before we open for the winter. So we kind of slotted it in there to minimize any disruptions that could be caused by that. So those are those are kind of the 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 other ones that Mr. Gibble didn't touch on. But so with that, I'll I'll move into the the other portion of our quarterly update.
You can ask a question about, yeah, what can you so so the so the fence is in, the swing is waiting for parts. I know we were at we were talking about in the plans about additional shade areas and and how what's the status on?
Yeah, so the the shade sale, that'll be going in. It's been so wet up there that we haven't been able to get the equipment up there to we just need to put four holes in the ground or cement for the foundations for the posts and then then that goes up really quick. So we're hoping the next couple of weeks here because it's it is dry.
Nice.
And then that that'll be a nice addition because it is it is hot out.
Counselor, that's it. Counselor Slipchuk?
Yeah, are you seeing any issues because of all the rain we had this year, like with any drainage issues around the adventure park or any other areas? That's going to you're seeing that might need to be addressed?
To through the reef to Counselor Slipchuk's question. The the drainage issues around the the park itself, we haven't seen a lot there. On the backside, we we need to address a little bit of the there is weeping tile, but it's we think it may have been improperly installed, so we're going to look at that on the backside. But overall, around the structure and and the actual area there is quite good. The drainage areas that we do have concerns are are kind of elsewhere on the hill. I know in front of the chalet specifically, we were working with transportation to we have a plan for that one to put in some French drain and and deal with that to get the water away from there. The other one we are looking at is on the blue chair. There's between specifically tower two is it's in standing water there. And then the bottom loading station, there is a sump, but it's it's full of water. So there are some drainage things we are looking into. And so we'll we'll be bringing those back. There's also noticed some movement on the hill on blue chair just with the amounts of water. So we're monitoring that to see if it's actively slipping there. So but specific to the adventure park there, there isn't much. But that information, once we we get a better picture, we'll be coming back to council with during budget deliberations and kind of a rough plan, how we could possibly address that.
Okay, continue. Thank you.
So the we want to kind of bring a different look and and I guess for for parks, there was never really outside of these updates too much information on performance or or metrics and and what what we do from season to season. So we want to bring this one more focused on our winter season and speak to what the department has seen and done as well as for parks and Kinnisou. And then we'll we'll try and do something in the late fall after our campground's closed to give some numbers on how many campers we've seen, how many miles we mowed along pathways and and those kind of things, just for more more information to to show council. So over the winter on the parks, the rinks are very, very busy. We do have the one outdoor rink which Counselor Crick had asked about that that we we are going to be bringing for council budget deliberations. It is in in some rough shape, so that will be for budget consideration. But that is our only outdoor rink that isn't covered. The other two are Ardmore and Cherry Grove, which are the covered rinks. The both covered rinks were extremely busy, so that that's a very good thing to see. They they were used constantly, which required then additional maintenance on them. So we were we were visiting the sites roughly about three times a week, depending on but towards the end of the season, as as a lot more people start hearing about these sites and going, we had to start visiting a lot more. So it's typically about two, two to three times a week that we go. And that's just flooding, filling in large chips and cracks and stuff and and any snow that had blown in and stuff. So that that's good to see, that they are being very well used and the communities embracing those. The then on the the flooding time, just some information, more or less. It takes around two to three weeks to flood a rink. And within that, you need to have temperatures, the best temperatures are between minus four to minus twenty-three. If you get above that, you're the dice, the the water doesn't freeze as quickly, so you you can't progress on that. If you get too cold, then the water freezes too fast and then you get issues with it not bonding to the previous layer of ice. And so it's it it does become kind of a fine art with outdoor rinks specifically. The going to Nordic skiing, which is primarily at our trails are at Muriel Lake. We have over ten kilometers of trails. We need about twenty centimeters of snow on the ground before we can actually our equipment can groom them properly. And that was actually reached over the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two season in November, which allowed for a bit of an earlier season there. And then we were able to carry that through until mid-March before we can see too much melt and and dirt sticking through or we just couldn't maintain it with the temperatures. So they're usually maintained about one to two times biweekly. There is obviously, if you get a heavy snowfall, we have to go out and do it. If there's damage from wildlife or skidoo or or UTVs or or something that they'll we'll have to go and fix those up as well. But it's usually around one to two times there biweekly that we groom those. And they're very, very popular and so that's nice to see. There's a very strong group that has been using them for a number of years and they're very we work closely with them to make sure that we're we're kind of meeting their needs and and allowing for people to to best use these trails as as they they should be. The snow removal, we also do within parks. There's nine locations that we clear snow for and that includes the over thirteen kilometers of pathways that we tried to plow this previous year with the amount of snow that was extremely hard to stay on top of. So the the kind of priorities became the admin building first, places where the public would get to, and then we worked down the list from there. So it it was difficult to stay on top of this year with with the amount of snow, but the team definitely definitely worked hard at at trying to to make sure everything was clear. So then moving into Kinnisou. So over the the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two season, there was estimated around twenty-seven thousand seven hundred visits, slightly up from last year. And we're attributing that to the schools, being able to come back to use the facility for their school group skiing. So that was nice to see with the COVID restrictions being lessened. These are estimates because we don't have a great way of tracking exactly how many. So for instance, season pass holders, we don't know how many time that that certain pass holder comes to Kinnisou. So we based it on a conservative time that they they bypassed and they came four times. And so that's that's kind of how we kind of estimated the numbers. But we're looking at a way to track that better to get accurate numbers of how many times our season pass holders are coming, how many times, like, the the single tickets are easy to to count and get those number because that's each ticket is a person. So you know those numbers. But specifically on the season pass, that's where we're looking for a little bit better numbers there. And again, the numbers improved because of the lessening of the COVID restrictions. This year, we did kind of meet our the previous record, which was two thousand seventeen, eighteen, for cold day closures. Over the the entire season, we've seen fourteen days in which we had to close due to the cold weather. Unfortunately, they seem to hit us at one of the prime times where we make the majority of our revenue, which is over that Christmas season, as well as that Family Day weekend. We were able to open for the one day and then every other day was closed around there. So that was unfortunate, but that's kind of how how we have to to work with the weather. It was across numerous hills and stuff all have the same same issues this past season. And then we also had a shorter season. You can see the days that were typically open and that was due to the numerous the waterline breaks and the issues with green chair that we had. So that that set back kind of how many days we were open. Next, we kind of put together a five-year average of a revenue breakdown and so that council can see kind of where we make the majority of our our revenue at Kinnisou. As expected, it it is predominantly from the tickets that people are going there to go skiing, snowboarding. And so there's fifty percent is our average revenue from there. The next highest is our food and beverage sales at around the twenty-one, twenty-two percent there for revenue. And then as you go down, we got eleven percent is from revenue or rentals and then another eleven percent is from the school groups. So they they do contribute to a substantial amount of revenue to 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 the hills. So we're working on on ways to to increase those numbers and and stuff through the school groups and and obviously our kitchen, getting that a bit more well-known for people to to grow those numbers. So then when we look at the ticket and pass revenue over the past five years, you can see that the trend, it it kind of fluctuates, it goes up and down. This year, we did see an increase in the school revenue, again, because of the COVID restrictions being lessened, as well as just regular ticket sales. A lot of people came out for that and the or sorry, the season pass, which was almost equal to previous record years of twenty-twenty there for the season pass sales. So that was good to see. Overall, the the trending seems to be coming back up because of, again, the the lessening of the 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 restrictions there. The food and beverage revenue over the the past five years, there obviously we were heavily hit. That was probably the the area we were hit the hardest. And that was due to the COVID restrictions. You can't inside, you had all these requirements. And so as soon as those were alleviated, you can see we were almost back to pre-COVID numbers where two thousand nineteen, we were making around two hundred and twenty-two thousand off those. In two thousand twenty-two, we're close to a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So you can see the impacts that the pandemic did have on on the revenue that we were getting there. The other sources of revenue, obviously tubing is is a a major draw. A lot of school groups and other groups come to utilize that. Ski lessons are are kind of the same. We're looking at ways to promote that a little more and and increase it. But it's it's been consistent for the last two years anyways. It has gone down since two thousand eighteen, however. Rentals, those have come back up and that's a lot tied with the school groups coming. They they get the rentals as part of that and so that that helped drive rentals back up. And so I just to to highlight, I'm showing all the revenue and all the good stuff. So to show what what that actually looks like against the the actual expenses. So to date, this is only till June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, our expenses are lower. But that doesn't, again, we're only halfway through the year and that doesn't incorporate anything from the adventure park or those other areas. So as well as when we open up in in the winter season again for skiing, those numbers will both rise in in any case. So it's just more to illustrate that that it is being subsidized at at quite a large rate. And we're with that business plan, the tourism business plan and destination plan that council adopted, we're hoping that with some of those ideas and stuff that are in there, that we can bring those numbers a little closer and and close that gap. So it isn't such a big subsidy rate there. So then finally going into culture, the community giving. So through the community action grants, this again, just for information, it's the grant is intended to establish funding for community associations that are the grant is intended to establish funding for community associations that are located within the MD that provide recreation, culture, fitness and healthy living opportunities to residents of the MD. So far, again, this, these were June fifteenth numbers. We've, we've had some more since then. However, at that point in time, we had five applications were approved with a total of forty thou, forty-three thousand dollars through that grant. Through the community associations operating grants, that's the community association operating grant. It provides aid to these communities and groups to ensure that their continued sustainability and functionality in providing the rural community services and/or infrastructure across municipalities. So it goes to a lot of our halls, egg societies and stuff to, for all the programming that they, they go through. And to date, we've had seven applications were approved and two hundred and eighty thousand dollars have been provided through this grant to date. Through the donation sponsorship and recognition grant, this allows council to provide support to individuals and groups who represent the MD and to also recognize the significant milestones and celebrations of its residents. To date, there's been thirty-eight donations approved and over twenty thousand given through there. And then finally, the council giving. This is a program that, that council has that supports the numerous ad hoc initiatives that, that's come forward to council that provide benefits to the community and its residents. There's been seven that council has awarded to date and over two hundred and sixty thousand have been given. So we, we are supporting the community greatly through a lot of these grants. And so just wanted to highlight how much we are supporting the, the community for you. And that, is there any questions or?
Any questions? Yes, councillor Slipcheck.
No, I don't have a question. I just want to say I've had comments from residents that used the adventure park. And just want to make for the record that they've high praised this. They said the food is fantastic, the services, they just loved it and that's a good thing. I believe that word will get around and you're going to see a busy summer.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to the team.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Moone, as well as everyone that, is that our last one, Esther?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so that'll be the.
That'll be it?
Yep.
So just looking for a, a motion, I guess. And well done, everybody on that.
I'll move that we accept the report as information.
Okay, thank you councillor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the planning and community services department's two thousand twenty-two second quarterly report as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor? Nope, I did it again. Oof, we need electric chair for me. I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Good, you're up. I don't have to call. Welcome.
Morning. So today I have bylaw number eighteen oh one, which is a repeal of a road allowance licensing bylaw. It's looking to repeal the MD current bylaw of eleven sixty, which was done in nineteen ninety-seven in accordance with section sixteen of the traffic, the Highway Traffic Act. Bylaw number eleven sixty was for the purpose of granting a license for the temporary occupation for the use of the road allowance where a third party installed a communications tower on the government road allowance as described in appendix A and shown on the map in appendix C. The MD received notification from the applicant in May of this year that they no longer have any interest in the communications tower on the government road allowance and they have sold the tower back to the third party, third-party company. Subsequent, subsequently, the applicant no longer requires the temporary application permit for the road allowance. Also, following the repeal of bylaw number eleven sixty, by way of this bylaw number eighteen oh one, the third-party company owning the communication tower intends to apply for a roadway licensing agreement to maintain compliance of the tower in that location. So we're actually looking for four motions today. The first motion is that bylaw number eighteen oh one, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, to repeal number eleven sixty, be given first reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, council? Yes.
I'll make the motion, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen oh one, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to repeal bylaw number eleven sixty, be given first reading. Any discussion on this? I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
So our second, second recommended action is that we're looking to go to second reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll move to go to second reading.
Thank you councillor Crick, making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh one be given second reading. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. Carrie?
We're also, the third recommendation, we're looking is that council make a motion to proceed to third and final reading.
Looking for someone to proceed to?
I'll make a motion, proceed to third and final reading.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Isn't it common, isn't it common practice for us to wait for a third reading on any given bylaw?
Cecile?
I believe that is common practice, but we do have, we can proceed.
That's why this third motion is for a motion to proceed and the fourth motion would actually be third reading.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Carrie? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carrie?
As well, we're looking for you to give it third reading.
Right, looking for a motion?
Okay, I'll move that we do third reading.
All right, thank you councillor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh one be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Nine point three, point three?
So administration, administration has prepared bylaw number eighteen oh two. And this is to repeal a current MD bylaw number fourteen oh three from two thousand and nine. At the request of adjacent landowners, it was proposed and approved for the closure and sale of approximately seven point eight acre portion of road plans seven, five, two, zero, six, two, five, and nine, one, two, one, five, three, one, as shown on appendix B, between the northeast of twenty-three and the northwest of twenty-four, sixty-one of one. The MD has received notification from the, the original applicant in two thousand and ten that he no longer wishes to proceed with the purchase of this portions of road plan. A survey was never completed, no payment was received from the applicant, nor was it registered at Alberta land titles. Alberta Transportation was consulted in October of two thousand twenty-one regarding repealing this bylaw and they indicated they have no objections to repealing it. Therefore, administration is recommending that bylaw number eighteen oh two, being a bylaw in the municipal district of Bonneville, to repeal bylaw number fourteen oh three, be given first reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for option one.
Okay, thank you councillor Slipcheck. I'm making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh two, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to repeal bylaw number fourteen oh three to be given first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
We're also looking for council to make a motion to approve August twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-two at ten AM as the date and time for the public hearing for this bylaw.
Thank you. Yes, deputy Reeve?
I'll make the motion, please.
Okay, thank you deputy Reeve Fedeau, making a motion on behalf of council that council approves August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two at ten AM as the date and time for bylaw number eighteen oh two, public hearing. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Going to nine point three, point four, municipal picnic tables?
Morning again.
Morning again, yes. I'm glad I'm not the only one that needs glasses.
I'm here to bring forward some information and a proposal surrounding our, our picnic table rental program, which is managed through parks. The proposal in background is the administration has prepared the following cost benefit summary report of the MD of Bonneville picnic table rental program for council's information and discussion. The purpose of this report is to provide background information that will assist in identifying council's desired level of service for this program and to establish a criterion for evaluating and approving in-kind donation requests. Currently, in-kind donations are only approved through policy number two, eight, zero, zero, three. The donation sponsorship and recognition policy. So for discussions on the benefits and disadvantages we're finding, the picnic table rental rates right now are fifteen dollars a day. This is per table. And we, or we charge thirty dollars per table for, for a weekend rate, which they would pick up on a Friday and drop off on a Monday. And then we also require a hundred dollar damage deposit with each table as well. The picnic table inventory, the total fleet currently available right now is fifty. We've kind of calculated a total inventory across the MD with, that are sitting in campgrounds, park spaces, Kinnisou Ridge, we have over five hundred and twenty picnic tables. The benefits for the, the rental program is the donated tables assist with the nonprofit charitable organizations with fundraising and events. The rented tables are a public benefit service that is not offered anywhere else in the area. For example, weddings, reunions, graduations, birthday parties. And they're also inexpensive to rent. The disadvantages that we came up with is the program, program cost. Basically example for your materials and labor, since you know, the, the tables are welded in construction by MD staff. The labor requirements that come with that, to look after the bookings, the loading, unloading and maintenance and repairs. Right now, there's no quantity limit or criteria currently in place to ensure consistency, transparency for donation requests. The last one is the established expectation by many community groups to receive the picnic tables free of charge with little notice given of event date. So the request to council is to provide administration with clarity on criteria for approving picnic table donations. For example, have donations limited to registered not-for-profit groups, associations only, and to a maximum number of tables per request. Reference to strategic plan, goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. The costs and source of funding, so basically we had calculated each picnic table costs around one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to basically build one table. That's what we come up with between all our departments. An estimated seventy-six rentals per table are required before cost recovery is reached at the current rental rates. We provided you kind of a full breakdown here of the, kind of the last ten years of, of the rentals and, and the revenues and donations that we've, that have come in. And so I'll just go through this year's to date on the two thousand twenty-two. So far to date, we've had a hundred and four rentals, which has brought us in two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars in revenue. The total estimated program cost, we're looking at there is four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. And then total donations to date has been a hundred and sixty-six tables. We've lost, the revenue lost there is two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. And then total estimated cost for donations would, is actually thirteen thousand, eighteen dollars and forty cents. So just to kind of clarify what that program, or the program cost is, is based on is our estimates based on a fleet of fifty picnic tables and include labor for bookings, loading and unloading, as well as the equipment to load and unload, maintenance, repairs, material and actual asset costs. So administration recommended action, we ask that council directs administration to maintain the municipal picnic table rental program with a reduced fleet of fifteen tables. And furthermore, that council directs administration to limit approved picnic table donations to provincially registered not-for-profit groups and associations only and to a maximum of ten tables per rental event. So we've provided three options there for you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, deputy Reeve, oops, sorry. Councillor Carson?
Yeah, just curious on the, so the part that you ask about the limiting the, the registered nonprofit groups and associations and a maximum of ten tables, is that, like, is that a problem right now, you're saying?
Well, we've just found that we've had an influx of donation requests come through. And so because there's no real criteria in place, it's, it's very difficult to, you know, determine who should get, who should get what, so.
So I guess my question would be, is like, of those donation requests, so how many of them would fall under this criteria, do you think? Like, are you getting people outside of these groups asking for donations often?
We are, yes, yeah.
And for more than ten tables at a time?
Yes, yeah.
Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
Yeah, I mean, for me, the number of tables is, I guess, some sort of question. But I guess with COVID regulations being lifted, more and more events are, are, you know, are out there. It's a good way to support our, our community, but a lot of these non-for-profits, even though they're non-for-profit, they are making money off, off of it, right? So I think limiting ten and I mean, so we're only charging fifteen dollars to grab picnic table, deliver it and pick it up. Is that my understanding?
Through the REVE, yes, that's correct, yes. So it is pretty inexpensive and.
That's, okay, cool. Yeah, I mean, there's more events happening, we're, we're limited, you guys are struggling with, with who you give it out to. Totally, totally makes sense. I'd like to see an increase on that, the cost of tables too. I mean, our, our costs of providing their services has increased with fuel costs and everything else. So I would love for you guys to bring something back to see what, what you guys recommend. Does that make sense?
So through the REVE, I mean, you got three options there, is that? So our recommendation is to, you know, to shrink the fleet down to fifteen tables and only offer that to non, not-for-profit organizations.
And then you wouldn't rent it out to, to private people then?
Through the REVE, yes, that's correct, yeah.
So you would just kind of refuse that altogether and just do the ten tables per rental?
That's, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, councillor Crick?
Sorry. That's just a donation then, the way you're, you're saying it, to the nonprofit organizations? You're not actually talking renting them to them, are you?
Okay, through the REVE, I gotta correct myself. I guess we will still offer the rental to private outside of that. I mean, it's the donation criteria that we're lacking, that we need some direction with that. And we still would offer the fifteen dollars per table per, per day to anyone.
Yeah, answering your question?
That's it?
Any other questions? Just looking for a motion, then.
Yeah, I'd like to do motion number one. I was also like to add that we bring back a different cost consideration for the rental program as well. If you guys take a look at it and see that makes sense, because fifteen dollars for you guys to, for manpower to go out there to take your, your manpower away from something else that you're doing, to deliver a picnic table to anywhere in the MD. to deliver a picnic table to anywhere in the MD for fifteen dollars a table is, doesn't make sense to me.
Through the REVE, and I should clarify, we do not deliver at this time, so.
At this time?
They pick up only.
Pick up only right now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Makes sense, though.
Do you want to change that back to the original?
Yeah, so we're good with just option number one as presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Fedeau for making a motion on behalf of council. That council directs administration to maintain the municipal picnic table rental program with a reduced fleet of fifteen tables. And furthermore, that council directs administration to limit approved picnic table donations to register for nonprofit groups and associations only and to maximize the maximize of ten tables per rental event. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Crick.
Yeah, just a question for clarity. We don't deliver the tables, you're not delivering any tables to rentals, are you delivering them for donations as well? Or is there's just no delivers period, or how's that work?
So through the REVE, no, we've eliminated any any delivery at this time for for anyone.
Go ahead, Mo, and I'll speak.
Through the REVE to Counselor Crick. Unless council approves the delivery and pick up, that that would be the case where we we do that. But outside of that, we don't do, it's you come in and pick up the tables and drop them off, so.
We just load them and unload them, sorry. We load them and unload them, basically.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That answer, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. Okay, Deputy Chief, nine point four point one. No, what did I miss?
We do have that addition.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, gotta look to the, yeah, nine point three point five, Bonneville Health. Oh, man, sorry, Esther.
Thanks, Mo. Okay. So this item is with regards to the Bonneville Health Foundation and a sponsorship request they have submitted. So in both two thousand twenty and in two thousand twenty-one, the Bonneville Health Foundation was forced to cancel their annual fundraising gala due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Following the cancellation of the gala in two thousand twenty-one, the foundation sought approval from the MD to redirect and from all of their sponsors to redirect many of the gala ticket purchases to a Bonneville Healthcare Appreciation Luncheon, which they hosted in the local Bonneville Health Center for Healthcare Staff. The foundation has chosen to hold this appreciation luncheon again this year on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. They hope to make this an annual event. They are requesting sponsorship from the MD of Bonneville for the event to assist with the costs of hosting the luncheon. Just a little bit more elaboration from in the in history here. Following the cancellation of the two thousand twenty annual gala, council approved deferring the approved two thousand dollars for the purchase of two gala event tables to the upcoming two thousand twenty-one event instead. However, following the cancellation of the two thousand twenty-one event, council approved converting this two thousand dollars into a donation to the Health Foundation instead of requesting a refund. So this past February, additionally, the foundation issued a letter indicating that the two thousand twenty-two gala fundraiser was also canceled due to the ongoing uncertainties caused by the pandemic. As mentioned above, they are now proceeding instead with a healthcare staff appreciation luncheon and are requesting sponsorships in the amounts of either two thousand five hundred as a bronze sponsor, five thousand as a silver sponsor, or ten thousand as a gold sponsor. This event is not eligible for funding under our current community action grant program because it is a private event and not open to the public. To date in two thousand twenty-two, the MD has provided two thousand dollars in funding to the foundation specifically for the Bonneville Community Cancer Clinic, sponsorship of a five-kilometer fun run and walk earlier this this year in May. A reference to our strategic plan, it is in line with goal number one, which is building a prosperous and sustainable community. Costs and sources of funding, should council approve sponsoring this event, the funds would be funded from the council two thousand twenty-two budget items specifically grants to individuals and non-government organizations. Administration's recommended action, we've kind of left it open-ended depending on how council would like to proceed. So currently, it's set that council approves the request by the Bonneville Health Foundation to sponsor their Bonneville Healthcare Appreciation Luncheon in an amount chosen by council and at a level chosen by council to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget.
Thank you.
And then attached in the appendix is the request received from the foundation.
Yes, Deputy Reeve Fedeau.
So this is just a a meal for the staff only?
That is what we understand, yes.
Okay, just, so. Yeah, that's kind of different, okay.
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment, just, I'd like to make a comment before we decide how we're gonna go. Is that, I think it's good that we reward them for what they've all gone through in the past few years. A lot of these doctors, these nurses as well, what they've coped with, and just take that into consideration and we make our decision here.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, I mean, we also got to take in consideration a lot of people too, right? I mean, you got the RCMP, you have private businesses that have gone through and actually closed down their doors as well. So it's not just the healthcare professionals that are, you know, have challenges with with this. I mean, if this is going towards something, you know, monetary or something that we can do, but for for a meal, I mean, you know, we could easily host them a barbecue here and for five hundred bucks, they can walk across and I'll flip a burger for them. But I'm just, yeah, I'm just not sure, I'm not sure about about that, so, okay.
Do you have any suggestions?
Through the REVE, I can tell you that the thirty-eight donations that have been provided to sponsor various events across the MD, which Mr. Clausen had talked about, they they come in very often. If this would have came in at two thousand dollars or under, their request would have flown through that policy.
Yes.
However, because it is above, this is why it's coming through to council.
Because it wouldn't even come to council?
That's correct.
Right.
It would not flow through the community action grant just because it is a private event. However, under the donations policy, we have provided sponsorship of private events. There has been a few, not many, but there have been some.
So they could come back and apply for two thousand or less and you guys would approve it, correct?
Most likely.
Yes. Anything from the CAO? Yes, Counselor Crick.
Well, I guess just based on the fact that they can apply for the grant, if they apply for two thousand or less, then I'll make the motion number two that we deny this request and redirect them to apply for the grant instead.
Just for a clarification.
Yeah.
So we would go with option two, Counselor Crick, and then just add to the end of the motion and further direct the Bonneville Health Foundation to reduce their request to two thousand dollars?
Yeah, or you can just explain that to them too, it doesn't, I mean, either way.
Sounds good.
Okay, Counselor Scarsen.
So would they accept that line that says the event is not eligible for funding through the MD community action grant? Is that just because of the price you mean, or because it's because it's a private event?
Through the REVE, the community action grant policy, it has to be a public event. Through the donations policy, it does not have to be a public event.
And I'm guessing they they're asking many others for donations, right, did they say, or it's not just us?
The, through the REVE, the the letter that we did receive was is definitely, looks like a a letter that would have been easily circulated. And I should clarify as well, even by putting them through the donations policy, that approval would be subject to CAO approval.
So we can blame him then later if he doesn't do it?
So do we have that motion up yet, or still, oh, she's still typing away? Be glad that I'm not typing. She'd be here for another half an hour. All right, thank you Counselor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that council denies the request of the Bonneville Health Foundation to sponsor their Bonneville Healthcare Appreciation Luncheon as presented and further direct the Bonneville Health Foundation to modify their request to two thousand applied through the policy number two eight point zero zero three MD donation sponsorship and recognition policy. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, oh, yeah, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Now we can go to Matt.
So Tracy will be doing the presentation for the quarterly report on marketing communications.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
In front of you, you will find the quarterly report from the Marketing Communications Department. It just briefly goes over some of the special projects that we worked on from April to the end of June and some of the projects that we are working on coming up, including open farm days. It has some information on our website stats. We did see an increase in visitors to the MD website over the last quarter. And we have noticed that we've a little more than doubled, closer to tripled the website traffic to Kennesaw Ridge over the last year, and that can be explained, sorry, that can be explained by, of course, opening up for the summer season. And we are working on some video presentations coming up here and getting ready to go and do work on the winter and summer guides for next year. So our recommendation is that you accept our report as information.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Reeve Fedeau.
Good morning, so towards the very last of your reports, there's ongoing future projects planning.
Yes.
Says Go East Foundation, so we are four sticker stations in our region, which was coordinated by the market coordinator, which is also sits on the Go East. And the market coordinator will be you, I assume?
I'm the communications coordinator, Alexa is the marketing coordinator.
Marketing coordinator, okay.
Yes.
So where are the four stations?
There is one in the Village of Glendon, there's one at the Bonneville Museum, there's one at the Ardmore Community Golf Course, and there is one at the Cold Lake Marina.
Okay. So later on, are we gonna adopt more stations as well, like with the Go East at all, or is that?
I'm not sure what, Kevin Kesselbeck is the one who runs Go East. I'm not sure what his plans are for the expansion of the road trip game. We have seen great uptake for that program. It brings a lot of people into our region and moves them around through it. Because of course, the road trip isn't just the MD of Bonneville, it goes through Lacklavish, Athabasca, and the other municipal partners involved in Go East. He could, if he did end up expanding it, I would assume that we would be approving of that because it does get people going places. It's just hard to find places that are open on the weekend during the hours, we need them to be open in order to get the stickers.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No, I'll make the motion to approve this as information, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Reeve Fedeau for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts marketing and communications two thousand twenty-two second quarterly report as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. No, it's your turn.
Thank you, council, so we do have a few invitations for for you. The first one being the Cold Lake Regional Chamber Commerce Business Mixer. So that is July twenty-seventh, so from five PM to seven thirty. That will be, there is registration, but no cost to attend. Next, we have the Twenty-Second Annual Alberta Care Conference. This is September seventh to the ninth in Le Duke. We do have a few of our committee members attending. They did send the invitation, but typically, it's just the committee members that'll attend this event. We do have a few staff members attending. The next one, we do have the Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center Open House. That open house is happening July twentieth from two to four thirty in Cold Lake. There is no registration or no no fee to attend this one. And then the last one is the LARA Field Day that is coming up on July twenty-first and that is at the Fort Kent site. Again, no registration, or there is registration, but there is no fee for attending that, so. If there is any council wanting to attend.
Do you need some numbers today, or just, do you want any commitments today, or just?
We'll just probably need some a motion to attend and
Okay.
And it would be nice if if everybody could commit today and then we can organize that. And I know it's a big, on our administration.
Hey, I'm the worst, Rob, and she looked right at me.
It does take a lot of time, so if we could get those numbers today, that'd be great, and then we can send that out, so.
All right, I guess we need a motion first, and then we can give you some numbers. All right, looking for a motion, council.
With the Alberta Care Conference, who sits on that one? That's, I think Counselor Swagerd, is that right?
That's that's the next one, though.
Yeah, I'm the the appointed board member for that.
Okay.
And Doctor, sorry, and Counselor Swagerd is the alternate.
Okay. I'll move that council approves attendance to the following events, the first three there.
Okay. Thank you Counselor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves attending to the presented events as follow, one, two, and three, they're up there, any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, then we'll make another motion, I need another motion, and then we'll discuss who's going where. I need a motion to accept the annual Alberta Care.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the 22nd Annual Alberta Care Conference as information. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll, oh, call for the vote. All right, number one, Cold Lake Regional Chamber Commerce Business Mixer, who would like to attend that from council right now? Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the showing for that.
Okay.
Whoever else wants to go to, so.
Counselor Crick? Yes, no, this is for regional, number one, Cold Lake Regional Chamber Commerce. So, we have two? Okay, you got those, Robin? So, we're looking for number two, Dr. Margaret Savage.
I'll be able to go to that one, too.
Okay, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, anybody else? And you'll have to get ahold of Counselor Kravjak and Counselor Sweger as well. Okay, going on to Lara, on the 21st.
The 7th.
Sorry?
September 7th?
July 21st.
21st. There's this one here.
Well, that's, that's Care Conference.
Oh, what did you say?
Yeah, Lara.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Fort Kent.
Who else? So, we got Counselor Slupchik, Counselor Crick? I can probably go to that one. Okay, now, we're looking for, I guess we... Do we need anyone to verify going for this conference or anything, or?
Unless there is any other council member that was wishing to attend, that is not...
It's just the members?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would go. I've never been to one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
September 7th.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need a motion to, yeah?
Yes, we would need a motion for...
I'd go to that one, too, if I can, but we don't want to send everybody, that's fine, I understand, too.
It's a good program.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want, you want to say something, or?
Yeah, no, I just, whoever needs to go, we did figure that out today, so I know they were booking for, for rooms for, I think, Mr. Olin was doing that, and as well as there's a, some activities that are involved as well, so they're looking for some answers on that one, too.
So, we're not too short of time here?
We can sneak it in, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna need a motion to whoever else wants to go to this. So, we got Counselor Skarsen, Crick, and Slupchik that also want to attend right at this moment? Okay, so, we'll have to, Jolene, you'll have to make a motion for us, too. Do we need the counselor names, or, yeah, okay?
Can you say the number?
Three extra.
And support the golf event?
I don't, I don't, I didn't know there was a golf event.
Yeah, just make it for the conference, and then they'll figure out the golf again.
Yes, how would you like to take care of this?
We can, we can add it, we can put the whole event into the...
Just put the whole event?
Yeah, with the golf and that, so.
Okay, just the whole package, right on? This guy's a tough, tough deputy CA, he doesn't even bring in lunch for us or anything. Right down to business.
We're trying to cut costs.
I see that, thank you. I wouldn't have took as many breaks there, if I didn't know you were gonna drive us like that today.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah? I don't think we, anyone made a mo, looking for a motion? Yes, Counselor? Skarsen makes this motion? Okay, thank you, Counselor Skarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves registering three people for the 22nd Annual Alberta Care Conference, and three people for the company golf event to be held September 7th to the 9th, 2022, in the amount of $1,856.79 to be funded from the 2022 operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I thought there was four of us here that were saying we wanted to go to it.
Sorry?
There was four, was Counselor Slupchik as well saying you wanted to go?
No, he's automatic.
Yeah, I'm there.
Oh, I see, okay.
But, good catch.
Good try, though. Any other discussion? Seeing that, call for the vote? He's just, I think he's in a busy phone, you gotta... That's all right. There's one of his grandkids texting him. It's just a joke. Carrie, thank you. 9.35, correct?
Okay, so next, we do have our correspondence and information, so we do have some minutes back from our other committees that council does sit on. We do have a few letters that, that we've received in the last few weeks. Is there anything that council would like to, to discuss any further?
Yes, Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
Yeah, more of a comment than a discussion in regards to Alberta Health Services EMS Service Plan comments, so they want us to do a survey for June 24th, but their email was sent on June 29th, so it's pretty tough to do a survey when you're five days late on it, so just a, another comment on the, our friends at AHS.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Skarsen.
Yeah, so just in regards to the council action report. So, I mean, I don't, there's, the motion hasn't been on here for a long time about the, the one that we made about the pool at the C2, or with the town, talking about the funding model and stuff, so probably not, there's probably zero progress if it's not even on the council action report, I'm guessing.
I did notice a comment on, on social media regarding that, so we did follow, I followed up with that question, if there was any progress, and to, at this moment, there is no progress on...
Yeah, well, maybe we can at least put it on the action report, so it's in people's minds.
Sure.
Thanks.
Just looking for a motion, I guess, to, if there's no more, no more questions or comments?
Sure, I'll make that motion to accept this as information.
All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council of the following, one through, what, there's 13?
14.
14, one through 14. Any, any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie? Where are we at?
Reports from...
Reports from council? Correct? Whoever wants to step up, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start here, things were pretty quiet. I had a last meeting at the Cold Lake Library, and that was the only thing I attended for, for committee meetings, attended July, in July 1st with Reeve Kalinsky at Cold Lake, and also with the, at the museum here in Bonneville as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, July 1st, we participated in the Pancake Breakfast at Sobies, the flag raising at the museum, also the parade, it was a great event, and the rain stayed away for us, and it was nice to see so many people out there, and everybody was excited after two years of missing all this. As well, I went to Manitoque Lake, and there was a lot from the rural community at that, for that day as well, that was nice to see. Also, I attended the Iron Horse Trail Meeting on Monday, they're fixing up lots of the trails, and they got lots of plans going forward, they're changing out signs, it was a good, positive meeting. As well, I'd like to just to bring to attention on, for everyone's aware, there's gonna be a bike rally coming up in August 13th, it's for, I gotta open it up here, Combat Post-traumatic Stress Disorder fundraiser and all that, and they're gonna be looking for some squad that maybe I could, I'll meet afterward, Matt, see if we can offer something for them for this event. There's gonna be bikers coming in, military vets, and for, to, for their, raise money for them as well, for post-traumatic stress disorder, and that's all I have to give.
Thank you. Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, relatively quiet last month or so, but I finally had a, our first Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association meeting, and it was more of a meet and greet than anything. Our C2 meeting was canceled, there wasn't really a whole bunch to report over the summer months as well, or not, yeah, not a whole bunch else to report.
Thank you. Counselor Crick?
Yeah. Had the Canada Day breakfast at Sobies, helped with that, and then we were in the parade, and I wanted to say a huge thank you to the staff, and they're probably not in the room, the ones that worked on the float, but they did a great job, and made it a huge success, so it was awesome. We had an egg service board meeting yesterday, I believe, yeah, and one highlight from that is there's a, we're planning a 2000, August 18th is a, is a tentative date for a tour, a bus tour, just a rural beautification, I think, tour, so, anybody's interested in that, that's happening. And we had an FCSS meeting a couple weeks ago, and Dave Hansen was in attendance on that, so, but...
Hey, thank you. I guess I can comment on Canada Day as well, well, I guess the Cold Lake Parade didn't go, that was too bad, a lot of people put in a lot of work to get their floats ready, and then it's, it gets canceled, so I feel sorry for all the, you know, I know what RMD staffed, and a big shout out to them, is like Counselor Crick said, 'cause we had a beautiful float, and there's a lot of people, a lot of hands that went, and I'd like to thank all the hands that were, that were on that float, there's, took a tremendous amount of time, we don't, we don't know how much time it takes, it's just, it's a lot of work. I just want to shout out to our Deputy Reeve Fedeau, he spoke on behalf of the MD at the Cold Lake, we got moved into the Energy Center there, and I really liked what he did, he brought up, there was a bunch of people supporting the library there, and he brought them up on stage, and he recognized them, and I thought it was a very class act, and it was really nice, they were promoting books and stuff, so I thought that was really well done, and he had a great speech. And one other thing, we had the grand opening at the Fort Kent Fire Hall, and it was, a lot of community came out, I think they did a great job, and it was just a great, great event to attend, so that's all I have, so. Closing session, I guess that's it? We need to close, close session? All right, need a motion?
I'll make a motion, we'll go into closed session.
Thank you, Counselor Slupchik, for making a motion to go closed section, session, sorry, all those in favor? Oh, call for the vote? Yeah, failed again. Carrie, thank you. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, we're looking for a motion, coming from the closed session. We'll wait for it to come up, but there we go, we're looking for this motion.
Yeah, make it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Skarsen, making this motion on behalf of council that council accepts the update regarding the post monum of the MD of Bonneville Mortgage on Block 16A, Plan 8220869 as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, all those, oh, call for the vote, I guess our computers aren't even open. Carrie, can you give a little more information on this? On this, it's kind of a vague, go ahead? What just happened there?
On...
This, it was kind of a, it doesn't say much, that motion?
No, no, that we will still support the Lakeland AFST.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, or we're, just need a motion to adjourn? Counselor Crick? I don't need to call for a vote for that, do I? Call for the vote? Are you gonna say it's Carrie? Or someone didn't vote? Don's on his, Don's on his computer again. Carrie? Good job, everyone.